I'd like to call to order the GIG Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, February 22, 2021 at 5:30 PM. Due to public health concerns, this meeting will be accessible by phoning, by dialing 253-215-8782, and entering the meeting ID number of 932-1605-6382, or through Zoom at the same meeting ID number, which is also listed on our website. Comments are only allowed during designated portions of this meeting. To speak during the meeting, please raise your hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window, or press *9 on your phone. Please refrain from raising your hand until the mayor has announced that he has opened up the public comment portion of the meeting. Your name or your last four digits of your phone number will be called out when it's your turn to speak. When using your phone to call in, you may need to press *6 to unmute yourself. All speakers will have up to three minutes to speak. Instead of speaking live, you may have submitted comments in writing before the meeting. That was to be before 3:00 PM to our city clerk on Monday afternoon, which we've advertised on our website. All comments must be able to be read within three minutes or less. And with that, all call to order. Please answer when I call your name, and we'll be also calling out our guests tonight as well. Councilmember Abersold.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Frannich.
Here.
Councilmember Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Woo.
Here.
This is Mayor Keon. We have from staff, City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
Our Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen.
Here.
Chief Kelly Bucy.
I'm here.
Thank you. Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
Senior Planner Carl DeCemus.
Here.
Thank you. And City Clerk Molly Townsley.
Here.
Our Assistant City Clerk and Open Government Administrator Josh Stecker.
Here.
And our City Attorney Daniel Kenny.
Here.
We have guests tonight. I thank you very much for joining us. We're honored to have Tribal Councilmember Anna Bean.
Hoxton.
Thank you. And Tribal Land Use Planner and Assistant Tribal Historic Preservation Officer Jennifer Keating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Director Historic Preservation Department Brandon Reinen. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Reino.
All right. And Tribal Language Department Director Amber Hayward.
Hoxton.
Thank you. And Parks Commissioner and Ad-Hoc Committee Member Louise Timman. Where is Louise?
Louise hasn't logged on yet. I sent her an email with the link again. Hopefully we can get her in the next few minutes.
Great. Anyone from staff or guest speakers that I have not called off? Okay. All right. Thank you. This is a little tricky because we are in completely different areas. Normally, I and a couple of people have masks on, so I will be looking at this long list of people to see who raises their hand. But with that, we will proceed to pledge allegiance in silence, please. Okay, are there? I don't have any changes to the agenda. Any council member have any changes? Okay, great. We'll proceed. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
There's a second from Councilmember Markley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, consent agenda passes 7-0. Our presentation tonight is recognition of ancestral homelands. This is given by the P'Alap Tribal Council and the Ad-Hoc Committee. Now, let's see, before I go too far, Josh, did Louise come in yet? Are you trying to call her? Okay. I would first like to thank and acknowledge Tribal Councilmember, Councilwoman Anna Bean. Thank you for joining us very much. I would also like to thank and introduce many others that have worked hard to bring the report and presentation to you. Anna, would you first like to say anything?
Yes, I would.
Please do so.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Keon, and the rest of GIG Harbor City Council for giving us time on the floor.
Ideas there is that this was not the main location, but actually a satellite site where female tribal members would go to do some of like food preparation, basket weaving and other activities. Next slide, please. And again, Amber will go over the correct pronunciation of Skwabosh. But the band was composed of warriors whose role was to intercept invading canoes. Again, it was a safe harbor and so controlled access in and out. They were notorious as canoe carvers. Life was sustained by fishing and still is today. The band cultivated extensive clam and oyster fields. And practiced potlatch ceremony, which was outlawed. Potlatch in native culture is the practice of giving back. It's it's giving gifts. And when when non-natives came to the area, this was a very foreign idea. And it was sadly outlawed for some period of time. But we do celebrate that again with the revitalization, something that Councilwoman Bean spoke about. The revitalization of native culture through canoe journey. Next slide. Louise, is this where we swapped over? Or do you want me to keep going? Yep. Um, so the idea here is inclusion. It's it's not simply recognizing tribal history, but it it's it's telling our tribal members that live here. It's it's telling non-native community as well as native community that they matter, something that really, so I actually serve on our Native Ed, our Peninsula School District Native Ed Parent Advisory Board. And one of the things we've heard time and time again from our students in the Peninsula School District, because we have many native students, both P'op and non non-P'op. And what has been shared with our our Native Ed consultant, Jason LaFontaine, is very, very sad to hear as a tribal member, but the one thing they hear over and over again is that they feel invisible in our community, that their history, their ancestors are not acknowledged. That being pulled out of the classroom to learn their history essentially tells them that your tribal history is not important enough to be taught in the in the classroom. That while your non-native classmates are learning about Washington State history, that somehow Native American history isn't part of that. And it's 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 wrong. But it's also, it it makes, it leaves our students feeling exactly that, they feel invisible. So efforts like this, efforts like this as well, and as well as the school naming effort at School Nine, they teach tribal history in a way that teaches us that history did not begin at contact, that history is more than that, and that Native American history is Washington State history. Can you just go to the next slide, please?
And that leads us to how we can celebrate this this history and this this tribal life in Gig Harbor. I love this photo. It's it's from a couple of years ago of the canoe journey. That's where many tribes from all over the West Coast and up through Alaska get together and paddle from one village area to another historic village areas and meet and potlatch and exchange culture. What a fabulous celebration that is. And we would have that opportunity too, to realize that there is a lot of culture going on out here that we're that we're just missing. So we were talking about recognizing the history of the tribe in Gig Harbor. As you probably all know, we have the honoring project art installation that is to be installed at some point in the future of fabulous carving that's been completed and is awaiting permits for installation at Austin Park. But there's other things that we could do to celebrate this history that we would need to figure out together as a community. What kind of signage and education can we put in along the harbor? What invitations are we extending to the tribe for Gig Harbor events like the Docky Creek Chum Festival and Maritime Gig Weekend, Paddler's Cup, you know, and any other celebrations the city has that can include them? And possibly even considering extending an invitation to the tribal canoe journey as a city stopover. I can't think, as a paddler, I can't think of anything more fun than to see those canoes coming into a harbor. And that leads possibly, you know, the these are, as we talked as an ad hoc committee, you know, there were lots of great ideas for this, and these are a few of them, you know. Could we have a canoe carving project in Gig Harbor? Could we have a war canoe on the waterfront to join the dragon boats and the Gig Harbor canoe and kayak race team? Could there be P'op youth on the Gig Harbor canoe kayak race team? Could we incorporate some form of potlatch in the waterfront calendar? Possibly even as we do the visioning for the Crescent Creek Park, you know, is there is there room for a longhouse or some other tribal recognition at that site? So that leads us to the ad hoc committee's recommendation. So that to be clear on how the world's worked here, the ad hoc committee, which was, as Mary Coon said, was made up of representatives from the city and Parks Commission and the tribe and some historic preservation folks. We also went out to a number of stakeholders in the community, to the Austin family and to others. And we asked the Parks Commission if they would be so kind as to provide some feedback. Because of course, where we started was the thought of renaming Austin Park. So the Parks Commission, you know, needed to play some role in that as well, but they also were able to host public comment. So a month ago, we made a presentation to the Parks Commission and asked for their recommendation as well. So the ad hoc committee asked the Parks Commission to restore the name of the historic home of the Skwabosh Band of the P'op Tribe to the Twalaka Estuary to continue to honor the contributions of the Austin family to to the development of Gig Harbor. But if we were going to rename the estuary, then we should rename Austin Estuary Park to Austin Park. And then outside of the Parks Commission purview, but to begin the planning process to recognize the ancestral homelands of the Skwabosh peoples here in Gig Harbor. And so with this, Amber, can I turn this over to you to to go through the Parks Commission recommendation? And we appreciate your your proper and accurate speaking of the words since my Weshutseed is less than adequate. And you know, kind of go through this Parks recommendation.
Hey, he's closed seats, yeah. Good day, everybody. My name is Amber Hayward, the Program Director for the P'op Tribal Language Department. And our office consults with Zalmi Aswalee Zahir, who has his PhD in Linguistics from the University of Oregon. He's contracted with the P'op Tribe for about seven years. Prior to his work with us, he's worked with Leshutsey language for about 40 years. One of those big projects that he worked on in the last 40 years was working with tribal elder Upper Skagit Vi Hilbert, who taught at the University of Washington in Seattle, and her life's work was to revitalize the Leshutsey language. In that work they did, they took a a document, a the TT Waterman Puget Sound Place Names research, and they took his his notes on the place names in the Puget Sound region. He wrote them in a different alphabet than we are currently using. So the the alphabet that you see here, the spelling, is what our Leshutsey elders chose to represent our language. And so what Vi and Zalmi did was they took TT Waterman's notes and they put them into our current alphabet system. There were several names in that place names document that they were not able, they didn't have enough information to to clearly make a recommendation on how to how to put it in our current alphabet, nor how how, they didn't know how to pronounce it based on how TT Waterman wrote it. They did a lot of cross-referencing. And so I say all of that to say, the name for Gig Harbor was one of those names that was not, they were not able to put that name into our current alphabet. And and so our consultant had to order a microfiche machine. He took about two weeks to dive into TT Waterman's handwritten manuscript notes, which were much more accurate than what he actually published. So he searched for the name of Gig Harbor and he found and he cross-referenced and he did the grammatical breakdown. He felt confident enough to where he provided you folks with the word Twalka. Twalka, which means place where game exists. And so just a quick pronunciation, there are non-English sounds in this word. We do ask that you do not try to put them in the English alphabet. It doesn't remove the sounds. What we recommend is just practice. You have muscles in your mouth, just like working out your body. You have to exercise, you got to practice and use those muscles. And and our English ears also hear something different when we're not familiar with certain sounds. And so when you hear sounds from other languages, you convert it into your English brain. And so what we're we're providing you folks with also is audio snippets of both of the the Leshutsey names here. We're providing you folks with instructional videos. We can provide you with whatever else you need as well to use for any of your resources, signage, website, social media, any of that. So the the name that is being recommended is Twalka. The X with a little W above it is just a blowing sound. The two A's together, it elongates the sound. So similar to English, if there's two Os, you're going to elongate the sound, right? So Twal. The Q is not an English Q. It sounds similar to a K in English, but you're pushing it back farther in your throat. And how to do that is you put your tongue on the bottom. So if I said key, 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 hey, can you hear the difference? And the last letter is a barred L, and that one's very fun. So we're going to put our tongue on the bump behind your teeth. And you blow air around. I see you guys trying, that is wonderful. That's all we ask is you just try. Twalka. Twalka. You guys did amazing. I saw all of those mouths moving, it looked wonderful. Our our ancestors who lived in the area that you folks are living in now were called the Skwabosh. Skwabosh. You see the the last three letters of that word, A B S wedge? That suffix means people. So Skwab means swift waters. Obsh means people. So when Jen was saying we are the Sp'yp'Alap'Obsh, that Obsh means P'up people. That X with the V on top and the W, that's one sound. So I've heard that in German, there's a similar sound, the Is that true? I don't know, I didn't take German. But just if you did take German, try to try to think about that. It's in the back of your throat and it's just a throat clearing sound. But when there's a little W next to that word, it means to round your lips. Skwabosh. 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 So that is the background, the research that we did, putting in information for you folks. We're absolutely again here to help in any way. We are not offended if you say it correctly. Sometimes we don't even speak Leshutsey correctly. Shoot, we don't even speak English correctly a lot of times, right? So we're not policing folks on on saying things properly. I will be the police on on writing our language differently because that's against the wishes of our elders. They wanted it to stay in the alphabet that they all decided on. And we're also here to provide any assistance that you folks are wanting or needing. I can be done unless there are any questions. So I will go ahead. Oh, yes, I see a hand, but I'm not sure if I should.
Yes, Councilmember Aberstol.
Yeah, I'm curious on the the pronunciations with the 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 W's and the V's and the cross, is that an English interpretation? Or is that, are those W's and V's part of the native interpretation?
So on the the Skwabosh, that word?
Or any of them, any word where there's like a little thing above the letter?
That's a good question. So a quick answer would be the English alphabet has 26 letters, right? The Leshutsey alphabet has 43 letters. Reason being, we have one letter, one sound. English, so the S wedge at the end of Skwabosh, that's equivalent to English, English S H, which uses two letters. We only use one letter to make that sh sound. So the X with the V on top and the W, that's one sound, that's the And I hope that's that's helpful. But we can't represent that in in an English alphabet.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Amber. Thank you very much. So everyone has had a chance to to read this slide. Is this the last slide, Louise?
Yes.
Okay. So I do want to comment that we did receive support. We did reach out to Mary Beth Austin. And at one point, she, we actually talked about an area being Austin Mill, and she actually didn't like that. She thought that it really wasn't a district of a mill. And so she wasn't, she wasn't at all supportive of that. And then we worked with her and I do have a letter from Mary Beth basically saying, hello, Mary Coon, I spoke to my brother and we agree that your solution to the park's name seems agreeable to us. We appreciate your being willing to reconsider your plan and hope it will meet with everyone's approval. And one reason why we kind of came a couple of months later and actually put this back out to the public in a public outreach was to try to make it so that we did honor everyone. And so that's why our goal became to drop the estuary and just name it Austin Park to still recognize, but call the area Twalaka Estuary. So we did receive support, unanimous, unanimous support by the Parks Commission. Also, the honorary committee wrote a letter in support. The Art Commission wrote a letter in support. And the Historical Society was considered as well. And they wrote a letter of support along with many others. Would anyone from our ad hoc like to add anything to this? Okay, we'll be voting on this tonight and I I'm I'm you know, in a in a month, we're gonna, we're gonna let the public know that we're welcoming, we're doing another proclamation on being a welcoming community. Again, this is not to be a sanctuary city, but my point is we're a welcoming area and we're working every every day, every way we can to show every type of person that we're 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 thankful to be here, we want to share with everyone, we want to be equal grounds with everyone. And we thank the tribe for working so hard and diligently with us. Thank you. Okay. And I want to thank Jennifer, Louise, Anna, Bray Brandon, who did I feel, Louise, Jennifer, Amber, everyone, you know, we have, it took a lot of people, like 40 people. And that's not even the public. So thank you all very much and thank you for listening to the presentation. And that will be if the if the council member, if the tribal members want, it is our first item on new business. So you won't have to stay to the end of the meeting to see the outcome. Yes, Councilmember Aberstol.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor, but there was someone from the attendees who had their hand raised, I noticed, when you would ask if anyone wanted to speak.
All right, we will, we will allow, let's see if the attendee might have been from the ad hoc. Because otherwise, the public comment would be if that person wants to put their name, their hand back up. If it's public comment, it would have to wait until, if it's someone from the ad hoc or the group. I'm looking at that, the list of attendees, I don't see anyone's hand up.
Mayor, that was a citizen that wanted to comment, so we'll have the public comment for that when we consider it in new business.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, thank you all. Okay.
Hi.
Yes, yes, Councilmember Dinsen.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say in case Amber doesn't stay and and the rest of the tribal representatives, this was a huge amount of work that your folks did to research these names for us. And I just want to express our appreciation because I don't think the ad hoc committee didn't have any idea the lengths to which you were going to make sure that we had the correct, appropriate names and the the correct spelling. And so I just want to thank you all and and all the folks that worked on on making this correct. Thanks.
I agree, even hour and a half ago, we were working on it with you. So down to the wire, thank you. Amber was working all over the weekend and then us after that. And so thank you, it was, the tribe worked hard. Okay, the mayor's report, Puget Sound Passenger Ferry Report. Okay, I've looked at the most recent Puget Sound Puget Sound Regional Council. The city would like to report that the Puget Sound Regional Council has taken Gig Harbor off the route of a passenger-only ferry. The most recent information that they put out basically says two routes of the can, two routes that were candidates for the route profiles, Squahamish and down to downtown Seattle and Gig Harbor to downtown Seattle were not moved forward to as a result of stakeholder meetings. The city Gig Harbor expressed that potential landing sites in their community was also incompatible with passenger-only ferry use and the city's vision for its waterfront, including recreation and economic uses in the area. So I just wanted council and the citizens to know that all the path, you know, we won't have to move over just for the ferry to try to get through our tiny little harbor. And we won't have to tax all of our citizens. That concludes the mayor's report. City Administrator, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, I I do. Mayor and councilmembers and members of the public and staff who are here. I want to acknowledge the crews that helped us out on, I'll call the Valentine's Weekend storm we had. We had exceptional service from our public work staff who went out and did 12-hour shifts around the clock for several days. I'll ask Jeff to comment on that as well as necessary. But a huge thank you and kudos to that, that was exceptional work. We also had some some assistance and support from other staff, including our police, who went out and did quite a few pull-out-of-the-ditch-type towing services that we want to acknowledge as well. And then, of course, we had regular employees who were at work on the Thursday and Friday of the storm. And they they also provided service to the community throughout the days. And I wanted to thank them as well for all their support and effort. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. We have some staff reports. The first one we added to, the first one is Chief Kelly Busey, vaccination update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thanks. Just an update from where we left off last week. The new case rate for positive COVID cases in Pierce County continues to decline. It's now down under 200 per 1,000 residents, which is trending the right direction. Of course, part of that is going to be attributed to less people getting tested as more vaccines become available and the the weather closing down a couple of testing sites. But still, the overall 14-day trend is down. In Pierce County, 142,000 Pierce County residents have now been vaccinated. Last week, 9,900 doses administered just in this county. And overall, in the state, we're at about 1.47 million doses statewide. So we're trending the right direction. The next two Saturdays in Gig Harbor at Chapel Hill Church will be the follow-up clinics to the two that we've already offered. So this would be second dose clinics offered on February 27th and March 6th. The recipients of those second doses, if they haven't already, will soon be notified by email of their appointment time and all the information they're going to need. So as you recall, the first round was 700. They're actually going to be prepared to do a few more than 700 coming up this Saturday due to people that had to reschedule at other locations and things like that. So and then on the 6th should be at least 1,000 second doses given. Still a little bit of a supply lag made worse by the weather through the middle part of the country. But overall, the trend is upward for our state receiving doses in our county too. So that's the latest on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that report. And our Public Works Director, Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I just wanted to give you an update that this last week, we had to unfortunately, accept the resignation of Josh Gilchrist, our Associate Engineer. He submitted it last week. Josh will be returning to his previous employer doing private consultant work. So Trent and I have talked with City Administrator Bob Larson. We're going to transition Josh's current projects onto the on-call engineering contract that we have with Parametrics right now. And it will likely overrun that contract, but we have understanding of why that will happen. We want to try and keep as best as we can these projects on schedule. I I can't say we're going to, it does take a lot of staff time just to manage consultants, as we've discussed before. So just because we have consultants come in, doesn't mean we can get the same amount of work done. But following up from that, we are going to be asking that the position be backfilled as soon as possible. But we're trying to look on the bright side on this one. And Katrina and I will be seeing how this change could fit into the second part of our two-part staffing plan that we discussed with council at the January 27th study session. So just want to let you know that's a slight hiccup. And we wish Josh well, but it's going to be a little change. And when we update our CIP schedule for the Public Works Committee on January, or sorry, March 9th, you might see a change in some of those maybe tier-two projects. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. And then we have a report from our Community Development Director, Katrina Knudsen, on short course of on local planning. Katrina?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Quick update or quick notification, rather, to you that we have been able to secure a short course on local planning to take place during our regular Planning Commission meeting on March 5th. This will be again at Washington State Department of Commerce. They'll be presenting to the Planning Commission. We've also invited our DRB members. We've sent an invitation to Jeff Langhelm and Terry Garrison to invite Parks Commissioners. This information will be posted on our website tomorrow. And there'll be a registration link for folks that are that want to attend. So this will be open to the public. Councilmembers, if you want to attend as well, you you may do that. It will provide an overview of the complex mix of land use planning laws that work together for our local decision-making and introduction to comprehensive planning and plan implementation and a review of roles in planning and best practices for public participation. So again, this will be posted on our website tomorrow, but I thought that I would share publicly tonight with you, council, and any of the members listening to the meeting tonight, that this is a vital, good training that will be offered for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we've got public comment on items that are not on the agenda. City Administrator Bob Larson.
Mayor, we have not received any comments on items that are not on the agenda.
Okay. All right, going to look towards the attendees. We do, please, attendees. We do, please attendees, if you, if you see something on the agenda that you'd like to comment on, this would not be the time, but this is to comment on something that is not on the agenda tonight. I see one person, whoop, they went away. Molly, are you working on that? I just had someone that raised their hand and then they went away.
Yes, I started to move them over to allow them to speak and they put their hand down.
Okay, okay, so the old control, I can see who raises their hand, but you'll control you'll control letting them speak, correct?
Yes, I will.
Okay, all right, anyone else want to comment on something not on the agenda from the public? Okay, I'll close the comment period on non-agenda items. Our first item of is old business, our only item on old business is second reading of three ordinances regarding mobility devices, ordinance 1453. Men's GHMC Chapter 8.30, ordinance 1454, men's chapter 9.24, and ordinance 1455 repeals chapter 10.24. The report to be continued now is by Police Officer, Police Chief Kelly Bucy.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, second reading of three related ordinances as described by the mayor that account for some of the new mobility devices since our code was originally written. These includes electric personal assisted mobility devices and motorized foot scooters. We also have consolidated the parks code a little bit, make it more consistent and easier to navigate for the public. And based upon the first reading, we've made changes regulating speed on both sound view and harbor view drives for the EPAMDs and included specific language about sidewalks. I know that you received at least one inquiry from a citizen regarding the language and I responded to that citizen with some clarification that cites some state law that also applies. So I'm open to questions at this point, or I would ask that you move forward with action.
Councilmember Wook.
Yes, the citizen who has written in a couple of times is, is, are they understanding now of what this is about and the difference between scooters and mopeds?
I believe so, yes. We had a couple back and forth after my initial response. And yeah, she was confusing, I think, mopeds with motorized foot scooters. And I think we're okay now.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other clarifying questions from council to Kelly? Okay, with that, I'll open up the public comment. City Administrator Bob Larson, was there any written public comments?
No, there were not, Mayor.
Okay, now I will open it up to the public that has joined us. If any of them would like to comment on this, please raise your hand. Okay, Molly, we've got Ben Coronado. You've got three minutes, Ben.
Is, is this for agenda items? I'm sorry, or is this for the chief of police?
This is, this is public comment to council with three minutes or less on old business number one, mobility devices.
Okay, is that going to affect the Cushman Trail at all?
What did? Okay, this isn't really a Q and A, but I'll let Chief answer that question.
I apologize.
Right, we prohibited those devices on the Cushman Trail partially because embedded in state law is some restrictions on federally funded trails. And I, is my understanding, talking with the Public Works Director, that at least a portion of the Cushman Trail was funded using federal funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Council deliberation in action. We've worked on this before, we did change some of the language that we had worked on last time. I don't see any hands raised, so the councilmember Heims.
Yes, I had a question relative to the Cushman Trail. And with the pending opening of the Burnham Drive sidewalk, which was basically the identical situation where you're going to have pedestrians, bicycles, and other things on that particular chunk of sidewalk, I call it a sidewalk. My, my question or my assumption here is that if we call the Cushman Trail a place where you cannot operate motorized foot scooters, I assume that carries over to the Burnham Drive sidewalk too?
If that's a question for me, I, I would interpret that as being the sidewalk not being part of the Cushman Trail at that point, even though it's along the route. And one thing I should clarify in my answer to Mr. Coronado a moment ago, it's motorized foot scooters that are prohibited from the Cushman Trail, not the EPAMDs.
Okay, because I, I think the public's going to be confused when we, we have something very similar to the Cushman Trail. And, you know, why can I ride my motorized foot scooter on this thing, but I can't do it on the Cushman Trail? And vice versa, in terms of complaints, why do we allow motorized foot scooters on the Burnham Drive sidewalk and not on the Cushman Trail? More from an operational standpoint versus a legislative or legal standpoint.
And if that question is still in my court here, I'm struggling with my video. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, my, my video is very messed up right now. Again, I, I think that we would treat the sidewalk as a sidewalk, even though the Cushman Trail may be concurrent with it for portions. But again, there were some federal funds used for portions of the Cushman Trail. I can't tell you which portions those are. So in early on, almost a year ago, when we started drafting this ordinance, I spoke with the Public Works Director. He said a portion of the money did come from federal funds, state law excludes us from being able to allow them on those trails then.
So I, no, I'm definitely supportive with the way it's written right now for the Cushman Trail. I guess previews of coming attractions when, when the Burnham thing comes to pass. We need to think a little bit about what we're going to allow on there. Physically, it's the same situation, it's identical.
Okay, Councilmember Frandich.
Thank you. Yeah, just a lot of thinking about this over the last several weeks. And in section 8.30.050, where we're talking about the EPAMD, AMDs on the, that are, that are allowed on the sidewalk. And my whole point of bringing this up is about potential conflicts. And I, I think that under section B there, having a speed limit no greater than 10 miles an hour is a little bit fast. And I would make a motion to amend that to five miles per hour on the sidewalks.
Okay, is there a second?
So, so we actually don't have anything on the floor yet to amend, so we could
Right, okay.
The, the motion could be to adopt it with the amendment as one thing, or it could be motion to adopt it and then a motion to amend it.
Right, okay, so we'll start with the motion. One thing, though, Chief, bicycles are allowed on sidewalks more than five miles an hour, right?
That's correct.
Right. So Councilmember Frandich, I think we'd have a conflict right there when, when we're allowing one vehicle to travel faster than another vehicle on that. So, but anyway, we'll start with getting a motion. Do I have a motion on the ordinance? Okay, so I need a motion to approve ordinance 1453, 1454, and 1455. Councilmember Wook.
Yes, I move to approve ordinance 1453, 1454, and 1455.
I second that.
Okay. You've got a motion. Okay, Councilmember Wook, did you have, you just have your hand up for, okay, got it, okay. There's a second, Councilmember Frandich, I'm going to give it back to you because you had made a motion, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I can, I can see that it, it's, well, I'll, I'll make it again anyway, since it's, maybe people thought it was, I don't think it's going to go anywhere, but I would move to amend section 8.30.050, section B, to lower that number to five miles per hour.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, most amendment fails, back to the original motion. I don't see, is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving old business number one, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Those sustained? Okay, old business number one passes seven to zero. And we're on to new business item number one. 1199 renaming Austin Estuary Park and designation, designating the Tuolacoffi Estuary area in honor of the Skowabosh Band of the Pialup Tribe. With that, I will my report, basically, I would let you the, the presentation spoke for itself. This has been almost a year of work by a lot of people. We've, when we did change it a little bit, we went back out to the public. We didn't try to just change it a little bit and just put it through, we went back to the public. The people that actually were opposed to it, we actually got their, their support, overwhelming support. So I think, I, I think a lot of people, more people than I could count, have done a lot, a lot of hard work. So you've heard the report, I don't think there's more to say. Clarifying questions for council. Okay, public comment. City Minister Bob Larson, I believe there was some public comment on this that were written.
That's correct, Mayor, I've got several.
Okay, if you would share that with us now.
I will read these now. First one is from Karen Burns. She writes, I'm Karen Burns, a retired educator. I am in favor of the recognition ancestral homelands brought forward by the Pialup Tribe Council and Ad Hoc Committee. I have lived in a box for 30 years and there is a collection of artifacts at the Fox Island Museum. But more recognition, recognition should be welcomed by the community. Making the ancestral homelands visible in Gig Harbor will help us teach the history of our area and will valid honor the tribal descendants living here today.
Thank you.
The second one is from Lori Bonvacini, and I apologize if I did not pronounce her name correctly. And she writes, to whom it may concern, as a 40-year resident of Gig Harbor, I am writing to encourage your support to rename Austin Park and the Estuary in North Gig Harbor in honor of our first inhabitants, members of the tribe. This is a no-brainer, it would be the righteous thing to do, the time is now. For all the years I have lived here, I've never known about the Skowabosh of the Pialup Tribe. The proposal is rename Austin Park to Twalkuth Park and to spotlight this original tribe. I look very forward to your taking positive action on this and then I shall look forward to learning much more, including the pronunciations. Many thanks, sincerely, Lori Bonvacini. The next one is written from the Gig Harbor Arts Commission, Mayor Kuhn and councilmembers. Among other responsibilities, the Arts Commission is authorized in the Gig Harbor Municipal Code to provide recommendations to the mayor and city council in connection with cultural and artistic endeavors and projects in which the city involved, becomes involved and to act as a representative of the community in such matters. In this capacity, we support the recognition of the ancestral homelands of the Skowabosh Band of the Pialup Tribe in efforts to recognize Gig Harbor's rich Native American history. We understand this topic will be discussed during your February 22nd council meeting and ask that this letter be included as part of the public comment. Although the Skowabosh people lived throughout this region, the heart and soul of their community was our waterfront area and the primary village site was located where Gig Harbor History Museum, Donkey Creek Park, and Austin Estuary Park are today. The Skowabosh civilization is a rich part of our community story and it is one that we have neglected to properly recognize and celebrate. We wish to remedy that by supporting the following as approved by the Parks Commission. Number one, naming of Twalkuth Estuary. The Arts Commission supports the naming of the Donkey Creek Water said, shed, including the Seven Acre the Gig Harbor history site in the lands in and around Donkey Creek Park as Twalkuth Twalkuth, excuse me, Estuary in recognition of the historic Skowabosh village site. Changing, number two, changing the name of Austin Estuary Park to Austin Park. The Arts Commission supports the renaming Austin Estuary Park as Austin Park. Number three, recognition of ancestral homelands of the Skowabosh peoples. The Arts Commission asks the city historic certified local government representatives in consultation with the Pialup Tribe to recommend an area within the Gig Harbor waterfront to be designated as, as ancestral homelands of the Skowabosh peoples. The Arts Committee supports Parks' recommendation of asking the certified local government representatives to, the Pialup Tribe and the city planning department to name the region ancestral homelands of the Skowabosh. This would be an honorary designation for educational and awareness purposes only. It would carry with it no regulatory impact. Gig Harbor has placed a high value on historic preservation. Through these efforts to honor and celebrate the original residents of this area, the Skowabosh people, we confirm that our whole history is valuable and worthy of recognition. This is an historic moment in which our community can be proud. Thank you, Gig Harbor Arts Commission, Bach Jackson Chair, Avni Co-Chair, Lindverson, Dan Zick, Samantha Kelly, Jennifer Beard, and Linda Sutherland. The next written comment was submitted by Kevin Cummings to the Gig Harbor Council and it's regarding ancestral homelands of the Skowabosh. Good day to all of our honored council members. My name is Kevin Cummings, my wife are proud and happy residents of the Gig Harbor community. We support your efforts to honor the ancestral inhabitants of our lands and waters in the naming of the Twalkuth Estuary and the initiative to recognize the ancestral homelands of the Skowabosh. Old member of the Lumbee Tribe from my father's side and Cherokee heritage from my mother, I know the respect and pride that our first inhabitants will feel to forgive. The community has done an admirable job of highlighting the wonderful history of early, early settlers into the area as well as our boat building and commercial fishing traditions. Those are admirable, deserving, and enjoyed by all who live here and those who visit. I encourage you to expand this level of respect to include honoring those who inhabited this beautiful area for millennia before those, these other ancestors. The Pialup, the Skwali, Suquamish, and Squax have a beautifully, beautiful history that exists long before the Wilkes, the 1811. The beauty and resources of this area were honored and protected by the tribes, presenting a majestic welcome to the first settlers in 20, or excuse me, 1867. Today, we still benefit from the respect and care that these first peoples gave to the area. Thank you for the inspired vision to honor those who were, who were here first. Blessings and thank you, Kevin and Kathy Cummings of the Cherokee. That concludes the written comments that I received, Mayor.
Thank you. And we do have some people that have already raised their hand. So other people that want to step in line, go ahead, we're going to call on people from the public now. Please state your name and your address and each, each person will have three minutes. The first up is Mark Hoffman.
Hi, most of you know I used to have Bob Larson's role. But what you don't know is that my mom and her partner Jerry paid taxes on Austin Estuary Park and the wetlands for about 40 years before they sold it to Conservation Futures, who transferred it to the city of Gig Harbor. who transferred it to the city of Gig Harbor. During that time, I came into possession of some interesting information, which leads me to believe that what you're about to do is 100% appropriate and you should do it without any hesitation. Renaming the estuary is appropriate because treaty rights provide access by water to fish within that estuary, although not access from the uplands themselves. So keeping the name as Austin Park is appropriate. And renaming the estuary tends to confirm Pialap Nation's treaty rights in that area. That's one of the reasons I think it's appropriate. I heard tonight that the museum is built about where the Long House was. At one point in time, when I worked for the city of Pialap, I went to the Pialap Tribal Historian in about 2007, who was a very wise, very, very cool lady, who talked to me for several hours before I could get permission to build the thing on Clark's Creek I wanted to build. And during that time, I got around to Gig Harbor and told a story very much like what Anna and Jennifer told tonight. And she started laughing at me because she was beginning to like me by then. And she said, well, you know, that's where we took all our kids for summer camp. And proceeded to tell me a whole lot more about the Pialap Tribe and nation than I had therefore, theretofore understood. So really, the common building that was there, I don't know what you wanna call it, but the one that was also used for the first school by donation of the tribe. The, the first, that area was about where Conan's Fuel is. And the museum is built on fill, 100% fill. Interestingly, Austin Estuary Park, thanks, thanks everybody for buying it from my mom and her partner Jerry, is built on about six plus feet of sawdust over the whole property. So it's not really original land, it just looks like it. And if it's not properly aerated like it is today, it stinks rather badly. So I was most relieved that my mom could get rid of it and thank you all for buying it. Bye-bye.
Wow, I'm surprised the sawdust didn't blow away. Thank you, thank you for that insight, Mark. Yes, Ben Coronado, you're up. Ben, please state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Ben Coronado, 730546, northwest, Gig Harbor, Washington, 8325. I just wanna say what a great experience it has been to be a part of this. You know, I'm really honored to have this come through the Parks Commission and, you know, I wanna especially call out Louise Teeman for, you know, being able to represent the Parks Commission in such a great way and I'm glad she got to be a part of this because it has been a really amazing experience. It's prompted me to really learn more about the heritage and the history of the Pialap Tribe and not just the Pialap Tribe, but all of the Salish Sea Tribes. This has been an amazing experience. I'm really passionate about this project. As some of you know, you've, you've, you've heard me out with my concerns and I appreciate Councilmember Denson and Woo and the mayor, you know, for hearing me out. I, I do, and so I know I've, I've been kinda passionate, I will use, about this. And so I really appreciate everybody taking the time to hear concerns and roll these ideas around because, you know, I think the, you know, the overall end result is just so much better because of that. And I know so much time went into this. Yeah, I, I have still issues with the name of Austin Park. I, it, it's a win because it makes the rest of it win. So I get that. You know, Robin, you know, was able to kinda cool me off on that, or I remember Denson was able to cool me off on that and she has some great ideas and you guys are just doing such great work. So thank you so much, thank you so much for all your time investment in this and, you know, and everybody's input, everybody's input. And I just wanna say Anna Bean did a wonderful story at the beginning of this, it was beautiful. It was beautiful story that she told. And that's one thing I took away from this whole experience is that Pialap's, well, the Salish Peoples, the way they name things, the place naming. And I really think that, you know, Austin Park could be more. And, you know, one of the things that came to mind was Austin Meadow Park, you know, not necessarily mill, it doesn't have to be mill, but, you know, something that represents what it really is. It's, it's a beautiful seaside meadow. So I thank you for your time and all, everybody's time that's gone into this.
Thank you, Ben, thank you for your passion and your support and your recognition of Louise and all she's done. We have Jason LaFontaine.
Thank you. Buju, indigenous cause, my name is Jason LaFontaine and I am an enrolled member of the Turtle Mountain Band of Chippewa from Belkor, North Dakota. I'm the program manager for the Peninsula School District Native American Education Program. My address is actually living in Fedge Way, I don't live in Gig Harbor. I just wanted to touch base and just have a chance to speak. I appreciate you guys opening this up. I know, I, so many people have added so much to this conversation already, but I just wanted to give a chance to talk a little bit and give a voice a little bit to some of the students that our program supports and works with. Our program provides cultural support to over 100 students and families with Native American heritage here in the peninsula area, in the Gig Harbor area. And we have tribes from all over the country in our school district. We, we work directly with students in the school building to discuss and share the history and culture of the native people, not only in this region, but all around the United States. We take them on culturally relevant field trips. And for now, that usually means going to the Pialap Reservation or going to the Sioux Quamish Reservation because there's nothing really culturally relevant that I can take the students to in the, in the Peninsula School District. So this is, this park would be a great place where we can take the students and have a, kind of a place-based learning where I can bring some Pialap elders out, some Pialap educators out and to talk about the land that was here. So that's another great aspect that I just kinda think we might be able to do. Myself and my program coordinator are typically the only Native American educators that our students are ever gonna see in their time in the district. Recent studies show that of the 22, 22 states in the United States don't teach students anything about Native Americans. And of the 28 that states that do, 85% of that curriculum stops in the year 1890. So could you imagine teaching about African-American history but stopping after slavery ended? So that's kind of a, an important aspect of, for me on this, is we're able to bring the students, not only teach them about the past, but also teach them about their times and, and the future and how that, how they're still connected, they're still relevant. We, we, we see them, you see them. And what a powerful way this is for the city of Gig Harbor, which was kind of quote-unquote settled by, I think, what's, as a Scandinavian fishing community. But to do this heavy lifting as a city council to acknowledge the first people of the area as a, as a Pialap Tribal Village here, I applaud you for this. You know, it's about honoring the past while educating the future residents. And more importantly, showing the students in the community, both native and non-native, that we honor everybody that was here. And what's exciting about this is, I don't know if it was talked about at the beginning, I'm sorry I missed the first 15 minutes. But this, the Peninsula School District may be following your lead later on in the, in the next month or so. They're looking at naming a school, their new elementary school, and it might also be, might also have a LaShutsey name, working with Jennifer and Anna on that as well. So this is a really exciting new kind of time, I think, for Gig Harbor to really connect with their, the Pialap Tribe and the history that there's here, that they, that they have here. And just real quickly, on my mother's side, I know my last name's LaFontaine and that's kind of, French Canadians came down to my reservation in North Dakota. But on my mother's side, I'm Swedish, I'm, her maiden name is Wallen. My maternal grandfather, Robert Wallen, was a proud active member of the Swedish Club of Seattle for 50 years.
Okay, we have, yeah, a little, pass for three minutes, so you wrap it up.
Anyway, okay, I just wanna say my stubborn Swedish grandpa came to appreciate my father, my native father, and there was no one more prouder of our native, of me connecting with my native culture and showing, showing that there's a way that we can appreciate both cultures in the same place. So anyways, thank you for my time.
Thank you, thank you, Jason, thank you so much. Stephanie Lyle.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Stephanie Lyle, the Director of the Harbor History Museum. I don't have video tonight, but that's fine, you can hear me just fine, I hope. I am delighted to be able to hear everyone speak and just really wanna say thank you to Jennifer and Brandon and Amber and Anna for being here. It's, it's just wonderful to make this connection with the Pialap Tribe. The Harbor History Museum, of course, sits right in the middle of the parcel or the, the estuary involved here. And just want to express our support and delight in working on this project. And we actually will be redoing our whole native section of the permanent gallery with Pialap Tribal input and we're really excited to meet with that group next month. And are also looking at a couple of different projects. In fact, I just emailed Jason, so it's pretty fun to hear his voice on here tonight. So, but there's a lot of great things that are in the works here. And I just, I just wanna not take a ton of time, but, but to express the museum's support and, and would also like to request that the museum is more involved in some of this as research and decision-making is, happens as we go forward. Because we do have a, a pretty plentiful resource at the museum that is oftentimes untapped. So thank you for this evening and thanks to all of you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else from the public that would like to raise their hand to comment? Okay, with that, I'll close the public comment. Jennifer, yes, go ahead.
So, so my ad hoc committee hat off and my, as someone who lives in Gig Harbor and is now, more importantly, raising my children here. I just had this conversation with my dad a couple of days ago and never in our lifetime did we ever think that this would even be possible. So I just wanna take the quickest time ever to say thank you so incredibly much from the bottom of my heart. Whether this happens or not, the fact that this is actually being discussed, that tribal history is being honored, that Gig Harbor folks that are non-native are reaching out to the tribe and understanding the importance of collaboration, of partnership with your local tribe and saying that this history is part of Gig Harbor history and that it matters is huge. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's just efforts like this will make it an easier and a happier and a more inclusive place for my children to grow up. That was not the case when I grew up here sadly. And even now, being in Cub Scouts and seeing the kids have to go to Vancouver or Seattle to get tribal history when it's all around us, it's in our backyard. And like Jason said so well, this is such an awesome opportunity to partner with the, the Harbor History Museum and bring them to an actual site, speak to tribal members that are still here and learn the importance of that tribal history. Because ultimately, it's all, we're, we have a stronger history, stronger town culture. Other towns would die to have tribal history and opportunities for tourism and, and culture in a city that only celebrates Scandinavian culture when we could be celebrating so much more. And neither is more important, it's just, it's both what makes this town so unique and so special. So thank you, raise my hands to all of you.
Thank you, Jennifer, thank you very much. Okay, so, um, any other deliberation by council? Councilmember Denson?
I would like to go ahead and make a motion if that's all right. And I move to approve Resolution 1199.
There's a second. Councilmember Heinz.
I just seconded it.
Okay, he seconded it, okay. All those, there's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, those abstaining? Okay, motion passes six to one. I'd like to, I, we've learned a lot, we've learned so much through this and this is just the beginning. And it's a lot of learning of our past and education for the future of our tourists, our citizens, our adults and the kids. So again, I'd like to thank Brandon, Jennifer, Amber, Anna, Louise, you did a fantastic job and all the ad hoc committee and the other committees too, that showed their support and the citizens. So thank you, everyone, so much. With that, we'll go on to new business number two, Resolution 1200, authorizing the submission of a Conservation Futures Grant application to Pierce County. Our reporter is Public Works Director Jeff Langhild.
Thank you, Mayor, evening, council. I'm gonna show the, show my screen here and show the property we're talking about. But I'm sure you all recall this property being discussed as an agenda item at the February 11th study session. This property is being looked at as a potential acquisition by the city as a Conservation Futures application and conservation property. This effort has been and continues to be a very large team effort, actually with a lot of the people you just heard from, for the renaming of Austin Estuary Park. There's Jennifer Keating and the Pialap Tribe. This has been a request in the team to have the tribe to provide some of the matching money and the Pialap Tribe has generously agreed to provide $50,000 of that matching money. There was some very quick turnaround that happened on their end, so very much appreciated. The, the tribe recognizes, I don't mean to speak for the tribe, but my understanding is the tribe recognizes that there's a, some, a lot of interest to protect the critical habitat on the land from development pressure, even though it's not a, a piece of tribal land. Councilmember Denson has been a key bringing everybody together here. So there's been a lot of discussion back and forth with the group, including Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen, her input, both in her position here at the city and from her previous relationship with the group, the Conservancy. And Josh Stecker for his coordination and development of the resolution that you have before you tonight. And then we have continued to receive ongoing input from Forterra and Wildfish Conservancy. So on, on the benefits, the structure, the development pressures of the, of North Creek slash Donkey Creek area and the basin. And then also how we can fine-tune our Conservation Futures application. So all of that is culminated with the resolution that you have before you tonight. And it is essentially asking the city to have, or city council to grant the authority to be the applicant on the Conservation Future application. So, that's all I had. Oh, one more thing I just wanna mention, it sounds like we're gonna be seeing rankings from Pierce County later in the, into 2021 on how we ranked with this application. So, any questions? I know I just gave a quick smattering of what we talked about on, at the February 11th meeting, but happy to repeat what we talked about on February 11th too.
Great, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify, from the position of Forterra, the position of the Pialap Tribe and city of Gig Harbor, this is primarily a conservation-preservation project, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I will, I, I will be coming forward with, there's, there's some words in here and we'll talk about that later, that I think are kind of in opposition of that particular objective, let me put it that way.
Okay, also, you know, Councilmember Denson has done a lot of work on this as well. And so I've been impressed with all of her, you know, her, her thought-out strategy and everything like that. Do you wanna, do you wanna share any of this at this time, Councilmember Denson, or not?
I think Mr. Langhild did a great job, I'm happy to answer any questions. And we did go through this at the last, at the last study session. But I mean, this is an amazing opportunity and we're getting an outstanding deal. We're very fortunate that these landowners are, are willing to partner with us and be patient as we work through the Conservation Futures process. I think Conservation Futures is gonna be blown away by our application. To me, it's just a banner project, it does exactly what this program was designed to do, to conserve critical habitat. And our project does even so much more than that. And the fact that it's right downtown in our view corridor, that I know a lot of us want to see the trees remain, the beauty, the natural environment. I mean, it's just a win-win for everybody, so I'm very optimistic and thank everybody for their support.
Great, yeah, thank you for your hard work. We also, we also do own land right next to this, behind the Cushman Trail, I mean, behind the wastewater treatment. So it actually, you know, it, it's, it's even bigger than a piece we're getting because we would just have more land right next to it that's connected to it and the Cushman Trail that we would be. because we would just have more land right next to it that's connected to it and the Cushman Trail that we would be preserving. Council did have a work-study session that they were able to go over this as well. So I think most of our questions uh might be answered. So with that, I will open it up to a public comment. Uh um uh City Minister Bob Larson, was there any written comments to this?
No, there were not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's three minutes each. Uh the first person, uh Mark Hoppin.
Uh sorry to talk twice. Uh in two thousand five, I was on the verge of developing a strategic plan to buy up the entire Donkey Creek corridor through Conservation Futures on a rolling basis. So this has been contemplated before in much greater dimension than just this parcel. I would encourage you to purchase this parcel in conservation because this corridor and the hillside behind it that is currently zoned R2 is critical to the preservation of Gig Harbor as we know it because without that riverine corridor and all those trees, we'll have essentially nothing between us and the highway. So please pass this, please put this in conservation, please preserve the salmon habitat and then do more. Buy up the whole corridor while there is still time. You can look at the development on the far north. You can look at the development behind my house. My neighborhood is sorely aggrieved by that and if you want more of that, just leave that zoning alone. I would encourage you to change the zoning through an area-wide rezone to R5, one unit per five acres, still retaining value, not getting sued for a takings claim and preserving not just this riverine corridor, but the whole hillside. But the riverine corridor itself can be purchased through Conservation Futures over time. And I think it, I think this is something you should do tonight.
Thank you. And uh next speaker is um Marion Bajakin, sorry.
Good evening, uh Mayor. It's Marion Barajikian. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm with Friends of Pierce County, a nonprofit environmental group in Gig Harbor. And I would just like to say I concur with Mark Hoppin's comments that definitely support this proposal and would like to see if you can purchase more parcels in this area for protection. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment period and um deliberation, we already spoke, so uh our proposed council action would be to move to approve resolution twelve uh twelve hundred. Councilmember Woo?
So point of order, I was gonna, I was gonna just deliberate here.
Sure.
So, so um I'd like to thank the Pual tribe for being so agreeable and working with us and Councilmember Denson, everyone who's worked on this so hard to make this resolution come to life. Uh Bree Ellis from the city of Gig Harbor and myself were in attendance at the KGI watershed meeting last Thursday and there is now a letter supporting this from the KGI watershed that hopefully will go in uh on March fifteenth with this resolution and this proposal grant application. I also sit on whisper, West Sound Partners for Eco System Recovery and our coordinator is working on another letter of support. Uh we'll be meeting on um March the eleventh at which time I expect that to be signed and also to um be included with the grant application. So this is certainly a wonderful thing and I'm also supportive of buying that whole spot as much as we can, putting into futures. So thanks to everybody for working on it and I certainly will be supporting this.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hines?
Uh yes, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of this concept of a uh conservation uh preservation of this particular chunk of land. And uh my, my only issue here is in some wording in there, we got a sentence in there that says the acquired parcel would be included in the city parks inventory, which I think is fine, and adapted for recreational use. And by the way, I, I put zip lines under recreational use, okay? A lot of water goes over that dam, including potentially the installation of a connector trail between the Cushman Trails and the city's waterfront corridor. Um I, I, I've got great heartburn with that called, we, we say we're entering this thing from a conservation standpoint and then we say, well gee, it'd be really great to adapt this thing for recreational use. And our first, our first uh proposed project here is to basically use it to install a connector. So uh I will be putting forth an amendment to this uh particular uh 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 resolution uh when the main motion is passed to um, to uh approve it. To basically modify those words to go back to the original intent of why we're doing this in the first place. By the way, I may add, this is, this is all ground we're plowing here. This is the debate we had on Soundview Forest. Called, uh here we go. Uh uh groups came forward with, with very um good proposals, but it wasn't consistent with what we purchased that property for. Called, we said, hey, we wanna keep it natural. We don't wanna harden the trails. Don't we wanna keep those natural? Uh and I view this uh situation as identical to that, only even more so. So I will cut off right there and I will be making my amendment.
Uh thank, thank you Councilmember Hines. Uh Councilmember Rodenberg?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything that Councilman Hines said. Uh but further, I have a question uh probably to the mayor and city administrator. Uh I was unfamiliar with the plot of land we own uh in that area, or is it adjacent to this particular plot? And is the city willing to put that into Conservation Futures as well?
Jeff, would you pull that up? Thank you. You're, you're right on, you read my mind. Go ahead and reference to that. I don't, I don't know enough of our, our future of the wastewater or anything to answer that question, nor do I think Bob, but Jeff, uh why don't you start?
Sure, uh this, this piece of property, you can see it's highlighted below the, the same parcel we're talking about. Uh it's currently vacant. Um it is i- in the inventory of wastewater in case we ever need to expand the treatment plant. I'm gonna close this dialogue box so you can see. So you can see, here's the headworks, the treatment plant. It's unlikely we would ever use this for wastewater because it is significantly uphill from the treatment plant and we would have to continue to move the headworks up the hill. Um I, I, I don't know if, if it would be um a good option at this time to put that into a conservation uh property, but um we, if you, if you, if council would like to look at it, explore in that, we could have that dialogue separately.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily want to explore it. I was just wondering if, if we've ever considered it and I think you answered the question very well, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, I appreciate um the support so far and I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Hines' comments. The goal definitely is conservation of that critical habitat. And part of the Conservation Futures program however, is that you have to guarantee public access. So the thought, and we could certainly detail that out better in this resolution, the thought is to put really low-impact um pervious trails, probably similar to what we have in Soundview Forest through there in appropriate places because what we don't want to have happen is people tromping through the riparian zones near the creek. We know that there um are some archaeological items there from, from when the Unskobobs people lived there in their village, so we want to make sure that we direct folks in a way that, that protects the land because protecting the critical habitat and the archaeological and cultural and artifacts there is part of the grant while providing public access. So it will be low-impact. Now you do bring up a good point, if we do the spur to the Cushman Trail, that, that could have a bigger impact. And that's something that we kind of wanted to put in the application as a possibility, but definitely not a guarantee. So we can certainly talk about that. Um we just thought maybe we want to put that in just in case we decide this is the property to do that and it would certainly be away from this, the North Creek stream habitat if we did go that route.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Frannish?
Yeah, I agree with uh what everybody has said so far. Uh especially I think it's very interesting, the comments that Mr. Hoppin made about uh a rezone there. Um the thing, you know, we talked at the work-study session about a pre-application that was done many years ago that showed a potential for thirty-six houses and it's my understanding that in order to build anywhere near that amount of houses, you'd be having to build those houses on stilts. The, the geotechnical that would be involved there, um it would be astronomical cost-wise. So um I definitely support this. I just don't want to see this president start getting set because I, I, if it was city money, I'd, I'd really be talking in depth about this. It's uh Forterra's money, so they uh can spend whatever they want, but um I don't think, I don't think the realistic market price for that property is five hundred thousand dollars. So moving forward, yeah, I'm a little uneasy on the president that we're setting basing, you know, I, 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 I think it's a great idea if we could get the whole corridor somehow through conservations, but um starting to set an unrealistically high market price um is, could be detrimental uh moving forward to acquiring properties, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Denson?
Yes, and that's a really good point, Councilmember Frannish, but because this ultimately is public money, though it's not the city's money, this purchase would be subject to an appraisal. And so we wouldn't be paying any more than that appraised value. It goes through appraisal and then the county even doesn't have like a second-party review of that appraisal to make sure that we're not spending um more than we should. So we're protected on that end. And with that, I would like to move to approve resolution twelve hundred, authorizing the submission of a Conservation Futures grant application to Pierce County.
I second. Okay, Councilmember Abersold, second it. Um you know, I can see part of Councilmember Hines' concerns and, and the word, you know, recreational use. Um I mean, that's, that can be, you know, I mean, that's, that's pretty, pretty big word. Um it can be someone turn off there, thank you. Um so I, I can see, I can see a trail down the road, uh but I, I kind of, you know, the, the southeast forest is actually in a preserve. It's, it says that and I can see a trail, but uh maybe taking it out of the city park system and using maybe council something like, something in between what Councilmember said, Councilmember Hines, where it could be, it could be, instead of saying included in the city's park inventory, it could be included in the city's preservation area with uh maybe a possible trail linking to the Cushman and then you leave it at that. So that's, you know, uh so I'm just voicing that, that I, I, I do support a trail down the road, just a, a rough trail, but that's it. And so I think you putting it in our city park system is a little bit um too generous, so, but uh Councilmember Hines?
Uh yeah, with that in mind, what I'd like to do is propose an amendment here. Um and starting on page four of four, uh that first whereas.
Wait a second, um how about page? Page uh two of four or page four of four?
Page four of four. I'm, I'm actually looking at the resolution, which I am trying to amend. Okay, the, the egregious sentence there is, says the acquired parcel would be included in the city's parks inventory, which I really don't have a big problem with, and adapted for recreational use, including potentially the installation of a connector trail between the Cushman Trails and the city's waterfront corridor. I would like to eliminate the words after and, okay? Eliminate the ad- adapted for recreational use, including potentially the installation of a connector trail between the Cushman Trails and the city's waterfront corridor and replace that with the acquired parcel would be included in the city parks inventory, which is the same initial part of that sentence, and maintained in its natural state as a conservation historic, historical and cultural preserve. That puts the emphasis on why we're doing this in the first place.
Okay, so that wouldn't get word of the, that would not get rid of the word trail too, right?
Yeah, yeah, that would, that, that, that would get rid of the trail.
Oh, that would get word of, get rid of the word trail?
Yeah, yeah. I want the emphasis on conservation, historical and cultural preserve. That's why we're doing it.
Okay, I do want to hear what Jeff has to say, being from the staff, but I'd like you to say that one more time. Um do you, do you, what, do you mind if I, it's up to you, Councilmember Hines. Do you mind if I hear what Jeff has to say and then go right back to you?
That's fine.
Okay, uh Jeff?
Sure, thank you Mayor. Uh I just, I just want to be clear, it was going back to a statement you made, Mayor. I just want to be clear, the, the city does hold um many, many, many acres uh in conservation state that is in the city's park system and uh with the intent of putting, as uh Councilmember Denson described, just some minor trails on there just for public access. So it, from my point of view, that's the way I see us managing this site. I just want to make that statement.
And those are still listed in our, in our park system?
They are still listed in our park system as opposed, yes, they're still listed in our park system because it has public access.
Okay.
So let me modify my motion. Very simple, page four of four. Adapted for recre- get rid of adapted for recre- go back to the beginning, the acquired parcel would be included in the city's parks conservation inventory. Because the- That's the first part.
Okay.
And after and, after the and, instead of adapted, and maintained in its natural state as a conservation comma, historical comma, and cultural preserve period.
I will, I, I will second that, but I would like to hear Councilmember Denson's because I think she was mentioning something about uh I, I am sensitive to her, her, it, it's for public access and we don't want people walking on riparian areas, so um I will second it, but I'd like to hear what Councilmember Denson has to say.
Okay, and Councilman Rodenberg, thank you for putting your speaker on mute because you kind of are talking sometimes when we hear you, when other people are. So Councilmember Denson?
Thank you and thank you, um Councilmember Frannish. I'm comfortable with Councilmember Mine, Hines' amendment, except that I would like some mention of those low-impact trails for public access because that is important to our grant. They're gonna ask about that, we have to write about that. It gives us, gives us necessary points. I mean, it's mandatory. You can't just block off these places and say the public can't come in. So I'm trying to figure out how we can add that in and I do think the parks, having it in the parks inventory is also important. I mean, that just makes sense. Um so if we could do the city parks inventory and maintain in its natural state as a, let's say as con- as a conservation, historical and cultural preserve, can we add something to the end that the city will be adding some low-impact trails that are intended to provide public access while protecting sensitive areas?
I, I, there's nothing here that I see that would preclude uh low-impact trails, okay? Um so to me, just the way it's stated, the way the amendment is stated, I think is fine.
But I think your, I, I, I think your amendment took out the word trails.
Exactly.
Right, so if, when we go to write the grant, it's gonna be, we, we can't add that. We can't put that in there is what she's saying.
Yeah, I don't know. They might question it, I don't know.
They, they might question, but again, I think the focus is on conservation. That doesn't preclude natural trails, okay? It doesn't preclude.
I think, I think you say that they're gonna maintain it in its natural state. That means, to me, we're not gonna do anything. That's what it would mean to me. So I think we need to add something about low-impact trails that provide public access but protect sensitive areas like Councilmember Frannish mentioned.
Well, and we wanna um, we wanna preserve it, but we also don't want to pay for it all, so we might need a trail in there to not have to pay for it all ourselves. Councilmember, uh Jeff?
Uh yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, thank you. So I just wanted to let Council know that as part of the application packet, there are some drawings and maps that need to be assembled. One of those maps that we were preparing was actually going to show a possible location for that spur trail. And so we could reinforce and hopefully obtain as many points as we can in that category to show that we're, how we're going to provide public access. So I, what I just want to make sure is that we're being consistent. We might have a resolution that says that it's being in conservation, but we are preparing a map that will actually show a trail on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Franch?
Well, I think you were preparing that map before you had heard Councilmember Heim's amendment. And I, I like the idea that the mayor brought up. I, if it's possible to say that we are maintaining this in our portfolio of undeveloped, keeping it out of the parks category into a preservation category and if we, is the help triangle, is that in the parks inventory? I'm assuming, Jeff?
Yes, it is.
Well, maybe, I mean, Mayor, are you thinking that maybe we should start a new category of?
I think, I think if we, so the, even though the Soundview Forest is in the city park, it is in the deed that we will not develop it. We will not, we will preserve it. So I think, if, I think if we added some of the language that Councilmember Heim's is talking about, where we use the word present, present, preserver, preserve, but that we don't just get rid of the trail language completely, we've got a win-win. And I think, you know, I think, I think, Councilmember Heim's is nodding his head that we'll, we'll accomplish both of what we want. If we use the word preserve it and we take, take away the word recreational and we just, we just say, we acquire the parcel would be included in our city parks because we already have preserved land in our city parks in the city park inventory and adapted as a preserved forest, including a potential for a connection trail to Cushman, to the Cushman Trail. Leave it at that.
Well, how about just adding the Langs, rather than pinning it down to a connection to Cushman Trail, how about just using the word trails, adaptive trails or something?
We don't have to specify where it goes.
Yeah, I like that.
Open.
Right, just do a little loop. Would you support what we're, what we're looking at, Councilmember Heim's?
Yeah, in fact, I had some words here basically to modify the amendment that I was proposing.
Go ahead.
That was at the end of it where I talk about maintaining its natural state as a conservation, historical and cultural preserve with low-impact trail public access, period.
Okay, okay, so let's have you one more time, you know, because read your, read your amendment.
Okay, here we go again.
Can I make one, can I make one suggestion?
Josh, Josh and Molly, I've counted on you to write this down too.
For Councilmember Heim's consideration, when you say city parks inventory, you could say city parks open space inventory because that actually is a category, right, Mr. Langhelm? And it's, it's a category that we need more of in the city according to our pros plan. So we can say the city parks open space inventory and then you could go on.
Okay, is it conservation inventory or is it open space?
Open space.
That's the term in our Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. It's called open space, but it can be conservation land that's in the parks open space.
I like conservation because you can take every tree out and make it open space.
Yeah, I like, I like the word preservation in there somewhere, rather than just open space.
Right.
Okay, okay, so the second sentence on page four of four in that first paragraph, we're going to start with the acquired parcel would be included in the city's parks open space inventory and maintained in its natural state as a conservation, historical and cultural preserve with low-impact trail access.
I think we're, I think we're getting somewhere. That's great. Okay.
I, I second that revised language.
Okay, all right, this is great. I like that we're, we're working together, okay? Any other, let's see, where are we with this? We haven't opened up the public comment yet, I don't believe. So any other thoughts by council? Okay. Bob, was there any public comments on this?
Mayor, I think we already downed the council deliberation, were we not?
Okay, I got, yeah, I couldn't remember. So that sounds good. Okay. So we're going to vote on the amendment first. All those in favor, say aye.
Can you read it one more time, please?
Sure.
Okay, one more time. The acquired parcel, and by the way, this is replacing the second sentence in the first paragraph on page four of four. The acquired parcel would be included in the city parks open space inventory and it would and maintain in its natural state as a conservation, comma, historical, comma, and cultural preserve with low-impact trail access.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh or Molly, did you get that?
Of course I did.
Yes.
Okay, great. We got a second. We're voting on Councilmember Heim's amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay, the amendment passes. We're now, we're going to vote on the original amendment, I mean, the original motion with this already passed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay. New business item number two passes seven to zero with the, with Councilmember Heim's amendment. I think that's great suggestions. We've done a good job. So great job, council. Bob, City Minister Bob Larson?
Perhaps others are thinking the same way, but I would propose a short break if we could.
Okay.
Second.
All right, how about, what do you want, seven minutes? Okay, someone always asks me, why are you seven? But anyway, seven minutes. I'll see it seven thirty. Okay, just one minute. Okay, the city council meeting of Monday, February twenty-second is back in session. We just finished new business number two and we're on new business item three, which is a public hearing of the comprehensive plan docket. With this report, I will turn it over to our senior planner, Carl DeCemus.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good evening, council. Thanks for, for having me this evening. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. There we go. Can everybody see that? Okay?
If you just swap the display settings at the top of the screen there, we'll be able to not see the slide.
Sorry, one moment. There, how's that?
Great.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Sorry about that, technical difficulty. So tonight, we bring before you the twenty-twenty-one comprehensive plan amendment docket for your consideration and action. This is the comprehensive plan amendment docket hearing. And so there will be, after the presentation, there will be public testimony, followed by deliberation on each amendment item and then action taken on each individual, each amendment item individually. So. So I wanted to start really quickly by just kind of going over what the, what the comprehensive plan amendment docket is, just very briefly. Chapter nineteen oh nine of the Gig Harbor Municipal Code guides the city through this amendment process. And just go over the steps very generally. Amendments are submitted to the Community Development Department and assigned application numbers and then placed on the docket. The city council holds an annual hearing to determine which applications will be initiated or in other words moved forward in the process. Those that are not initiated are then brought back to council at the next meeting and removed from the docket by resolution. Those amendments that are initiated are sent to the planning commission to study, conduct the public process, including a hearing and issue the SEPA determination. The amendment is then brought back to the council as a recommendation from the planning commission for council's ultimate action. The council can accept and approve the amendment or they could make changes, conduct its own public process at that point. So on the docket right now, we have five proposals. A culture and arts element proposal, an amendment to the land use element, an amendment to, two amendments to our shoreline master program, one, the periodic update, the other relative to public arts in the shoreline jurisdiction. And then finally, an amendment to the housing element. Are the slides changing for you or they're not changing, are they?
They're changing. However, there's just, there's one in the background, so it's not really the best presentation to the council.
I don't know why that's happening. Okay, bear with me one moment, I'm sorry.
That's better there.
That's good.
Okay, I, for some reason I have it on, it's not, the slideshow is working on two different screens for me, so I'm going to, it's going to have to improvise here a little bit. Sorry about this. Okay, so where I was at, so we have five comprehensive plan amendments on the docket tonight. Culture and arts element, an update to the land use element, two updates to the shoreline master program, one relative to the periodic update, the other relative to public arts in the shoreline jurisdiction, and finally, one to the housing element. So PL Comp eighteen zero 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 one is the culture and arts element amendment. And you'll recognize this amendment. This has been before you previously. It was actually initiated in twenty nineteen by council. But it was only initiated as staff time allowed. So we were only to work on it if there was, if there was time in, in our work program to actually process the amendment. And so unfortunately, staff did not find that time to process this amendment. And so we brought it before you again in this docket process. And just very briefly, this amendment would seek to add a new element to the comprehensive plan. That would be an arts and culture element. The applicant for this amendment is the City of Gig Harbor Arts Commission. And they did provide draft language for the planning commission and the council to consider, which has, which is in your packet tonight. But as we are getting very close to beginning work on our state mandated comprehensive plan update, which is due in twenty twenty-four, staff is recommending that this amendment be prioritized on our twenty twenty-two work program rather than twenty twenty-one. And I wanted to briefly, we've received a lot of public comment on this over the last few days. And I believe we have one that will be read into the record. We have several other written comments that were provided to us, and I just want to run down to get their names on the record. I'm just going to run down the names of those folks who provided those public comments to us. We have Charlie Meacham, Marion Berickean and Smart, Patricia Frazino, Pam Jenkins, Marla Morgan of Hands-on Art, Sarah Frank, Hannah J., Wendy Given Hess, Barbara Turecki, Lance and Gregory Trayvon, Marta O'Neill, Anne Knapp, Scott Markowitz, Mark Hoppin, Terry McClellan, Ernie Donhour and family, Lori Bonavici, Robin Avney, Nora Eckstein, Charlie Glock Jackson and Lynn Stevenson. And so I'd like to stop there if I could, Mayor, and take any questions on, on this amendment before talking about the next one, if you could.
Right.
I could jump in and just, Carl just read the names of the folks that sent comments in prior to the hearing. Those have all been transmitted to council. So I wanted to let everyone that's listening know that their comments have been transmitted to the city council.
Thanks for the reminder, Katrina.
So on page two of thirty-three, when you say it would be processed during the twenty twenty-four, now you're saying it would be processed during the twenty twenty-two? Is that correct?
Well, so the, the comp plan amendment is actually due in twenty twenty-four, but we would actually begin work on that comprehensive plan update in twenty twenty-two and, and really be working on it in twenty twenty-three probably more intensely because it's, it's going to be a large body of work, but that work would begin in twenty twenty-two. And so it would, it would maybe make sense to prioritize this amendment at that time.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. Quite, this will be, this will be, instead of discussion right now, it'll be questions to Carl, Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. So I spoke with community director Katrina Knudsen today. And, and the problem, I guess, with this is there has not been found staff time. However, there is a consultant coming in that's going to be work on, working on some of these other potential amendments. For example, the, the one with the buildable, the land use element update. A consultant, I think, is going to be working on that. And with a little bit more funding, that consultant at the same time could also be working on the arts element. Is that, did I get that correct, Katrina?
Thank you, Councilmember Woo. Yes, our conversation this morning was regarding the current staff priorities that were outlined in the long-range work program with the council at your retreat recently. And we discussed the fact that this work item was not on that work program. And so we discussed several potential alternatives to this, which did include under planning objective and number one within the current twenty twenty-one budget, we do have ten thousand dollars for a consultant to work on land use chapter amendments that is currently on our work program. One of the suggestions that I discussed with Councilmember Woo would be that it could be possible that that budget item, if it were to be increased to add capacity, work capacity, that that, this body of work could be primarily done through a consultant, but it would take some additional funding from council. And again, that's due to staff limitations.
And I think that that funding amount was between ten and fifteen thousand, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we can do it for that, you believe?
Yes, I do. I think that that would be a reasonable amount for this body.
So it's my So it's my understanding that this the portion of this element was written by the. Arts Commission with help from. Some staff that have since left the city. So hopefully, there would not be a lot of planning commission time. Involved in this. So I think we talked about maybe Ms. Kester or Ms. Amel that also helped with this, is that correct?
Yeah, we believe that they that there was some assistance provided previously. And again, based on our conversation this morning. The Arts Commission did a fantastic job putting this together for consideration by the city. And the the major lift here is the public process through. You know, the public process of commenting on it, looking at the the goals and policies that would be initiated. And then potentially, if there were any goals or policies or objectives or that were added into the plan that are not foreseen currently by the draft, then that's where additional work. Could be. Could be seen.
But this could also be done by the consultant as well, is that correct?
Yes, and again, with the consultant dollars, that would still be being managed by Senior Planner Carl DeCemis. Just be the primary. The primary heavy look could be by the consultant.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, Councilmember Abra Sol.
Yeah, Katrina, that ten to fifteen thousand dollars quote that you got us, has that number been locked down, or is that just an estimation or?
Good question, Councilmember Abra Sol. That is an estimation based on previous works that I've done with comprehensive plan chapters and comprehensive plan amendments. It could be less than that, and if it is, that would be wonderful. It could also be more than that, depending on if additional items are added into. This element.
And council needs to would need to approve those funds since they're not in the budget, correct?
That's correct. And again, the the creative problem solving with this comes with, and I know I've explained this to you at your. At the council retreat, but really, we have. We're at max capacity right now with what we can do in terms of long range planning projects with UGA. Annexation analysis and the housing attainability study and all of those other items that the councils just prioritized, so. The discussion with Councilmember Woo was just creative problem solving in order to figure out ways that we could get this done with our limited staff capacity.
Thank you. Councilmember Frannich.
Yes, thank you. Katrina, it is Jeff Langham mentioned earlier. That even though we have a consultant working on different things, there's still a substantial amount of staff time that needs to happen to. As overview over the, I'm assuming Mr. Langham was talking about public works projects, I'm assuming the same would. Hold true for this.
Yes, there is staff time associated with managing a consultant properly, which.
Okay, yeah, that thing, thank you.
Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thanks. And I don't think that Mr. Roddenberg, Dave Rodenbeck is here this evening, our finance director. But I did talk with him this morning to inquire about the funding. The ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And he assured me that that would not be a problem, that the city does have this funding if we decide to do this, so. I'm sorry, he's not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woo. Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, the the consultant that would work on this would be. An expert or let's say have expertise in the area of. The comprehensive plan process. Or and or have content knowledge around the arts and culture type of. Commission or let's say activity. Which one is it?
The consultant that we would see Councilmember Heinz would be a general planning practitioner. That would that's an expert in processing comprehensive plan amendments and gathering public input.
Okay, so so is my assumption correct, they would rely heavily on input? From the Arts Commission as we know it?
We would definitely have them as a major stakeholder where we would seek input from, yes. This would go through the planning commission, though, since it's a comprehensive plan amendment. So they would be the primary recommending body to the council that would be looking at this for content. And objectives and any budget that would need to be associated with it.
So so going forward. Would approval of things for the. Arts and culture element. Would that go through the planning commission, or would that go through the arts and culture commission?
Really good question. The chapter itself, since it would be a formal element of the comprehensive plan, would be a product and responsibility of the planning commission.
Okay. So e- even though the expertise doesn't lie, let's face it, you guys deal with land, okay? And things like transportation are farmed out to Public Works Commission, that type of thing. I'm struggling a little bit with why that same type of farming out idea wouldn't work. With the arts commission.
Yeah, they, as I stated, they would be a very a primary stakeholder. In any update, if that element were to be adopted and need to be revised in the future, you can think of it similar to. There's a parks chapter in our comprehensive plan, and we rely heavily on Jeff and his team for updating that transportation, we rely heavily on. Our engineers and public works department and updating that, so it's not the comprehensive plan, because it is, it touches all aspects of our municipal life. You know, we do have to outreach to other. Entities in order to gain the expertise, so it wouldn't be that far fetched.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, moving on then, I think to the next. Proposed amendments. I've combined two for this for this slide for the presentation, so I've combined PL comp twenty one zero 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 one and PL comp twenty one zero 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 four. In just for presentation purposes.
That's just one sec, so. Since we're gonna have to have a public hearing on each of these, and I'm leaving up to you, Carl. Would you rather have me, would you rather go through the whole thing, or would you rather have me open up the public comment? On each specific, because I'm gonna open up the public comment on each specific one. So do you want me to go through the whole thing first?
So Mayor, I would suggest, yeah, getting through the whole presentation. And stopping for council questions along the way now. And then. I would propose that we open public comment on all. All of the amendments. At one time. And then come back and deliberate on each. Individual item and take action on each individual item.
Okay, let's go through the whole thing, but. I've got some instructions where we can actually open up the public column on each one, and that way we're not jumping through them all.
Okay.
That sounds great. Go ahead and continue.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So as I was saying, I've just combined these just for presentation purposes, because they. They they touch the same. Items, the the reason for the amendments for the proposed amendments is the same, so. The reason for these amendments is is that the city's twenty twenty one budget identifies several items that the planning division will be working on this year. Two of those, once completed, will likely necessitate amendments to the land use element and the housing element of the comp plan. The two budget items that I'm referring to are housing attainability and the annexation feasibility study. Housing attainability will entail the city working with a consultant to conduct a housing needs assessment that would include. Analysis of housing needs for city residents based on age and special need. An estimate of housing needs by income group. And policy recommendations to increase rental affordability. The annexation feasibility study would entail the city working with a consultant to conduct a detailed assessment of all thirteen urban growth areas identified in the comp plan. And prior prioritize them for potential annexation, as well as identify issues and opportunities within each. Staff, as a result, anticipates the need for several comp plan amendments. And the two amendments proposed here would act as placeholders for those potential amendments. And we would develop them concurrent with those budget items that I mentioned previously.
Okay, so great, Carl, just right there. Try Councilmember Frannich.
Yeah, Carl. Can, you know, they, number two and and number five. Which is oh, one and oh, four on on your slide there.
Yes.
They seem like they're duplicate. Well, I mean, what is the reason why they're separated apart?
Because they deal with different, two different elements of the comprehensive plan. So we would be updating the land use element. Separate from the housing element. And there could be in the land use element, there could be some need for. Some updates to bring it into consistency with. Some provisions in the Gig Harbor Municipal Code. Again, as a result of these budget items, and so. We're anticipating the need for these changes. And because there are two separate elements of the comprehensive plan, we need two separate. Application numbers.
But they they both address housing attainability analysis and urban growth area analysis.
No, well, the the the, are you, you're speaking of the budgeted items?
Well, I'm I'm speaking of the language on page two of thirty three that describes the. The. Both proposals.
Well, both of those, the housing attainability and the annexation feasibility study will likely touch. On both of those. On both on we touch, we touch both of those elements of the comprehensive plan. But they probably would likely touch them in different ways, and so we we again are. We are predicting that we will have. Amendments and need to make amendments to these comprehensive plan elements, but we don't know what those are going to look like yet until we get into the the process. Of looking at housing attainability and this annexation feasibility study, so it's.
Okay, well, well, I mean, you know, I won't belabor any 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 longer. I mean, I I'm in support of both of them, so I was just. Trying to understand why they were separated apart, that's all. I can get with.
And I can understand that, Councilman Franch, I appreciate your your comments.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Carl, thanks.
Okay, well, and so lastly, I just wanted to say on this one. That staff is recommending initiation of both of these amendments. For all the reasons that I just stated in the discussion with Councilmember Frannich there. And so with that, I'll take any additional questions on this one, or I could move on from here.
I go ahead and proceed. Don't see any questions. Hands raised.
Okay, PL comp twenty one zero 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 two, this is the shoreline master program periodic update. So for the past few years, the city staff has been working with city's planning commission. And a consultant on a state mandated periodic update to its adopted shoreline master program. This update was originally due in June of two thousand nineteen. But we've been working closely with the State Department of Ecology, and so we've been granted additional time to complete this update and get it completed. The update is very nearly complete, and staff expects to complete the public process in the early spring of this year and bring a recommendation back to the council shortly thereafter. The checklist provided to council in your packets contains the proposed and required amendments to the program. And we're really down to just coordinating some consistency and some of the definitions between the program. And the city's flood hazard regulations in chapter nineteen ten of the Gig Harbor Municipal Code. Staff is recommending initiation of this amendment in order to complete this state mandated periodic update process. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, I'm gonna move. Sorry, coordinate this other screen. PL comp twenty one zero 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 three is our final amendment proposed. The shoreline master program again, and this is a public arts. And it says exemption, I don't know if I, it might be a bit of a a misnomer in this case, but. It still remains to be seen once we get into the the actual process. So just a little bit of background on this one, the city has been working through an early process of placing some public art that was being called the honoring project at the. Now Austin Park during the pre-application process, it was discovered that. Where the project would be placed would require a shoreline variance, as art is not an approved use in the shoreline jurisdiction, nor in a critical area buffer. The criteria that would need to be met to approve a variance, we found would be very difficult to meet. So staff started working with the State Department of Ecology on the feasibility of amending our shoreline master program. To allow for art installations within the shoreline jurisdiction. And through that process of of talking with ecology. We we learned that other municipalities have also noted this oversight in their own shoreline master programs. And and some of those municipalities have actually produced regulation to allow such. Initiating this amendment would allow staff to work with the public ecology and the planning commission to produce regulations around this use. That would allow flexibility while remaining consistent with the state and local regulations. Therefore, staff is recommending initiation of this amendment as well. Any questions on this one?
I have a question. So is this going to be for the entire? Bay of Gig Harbor that will be working to amend, or is this just for the honoring project, or how, what areas taken into consideration?
It would be, it would be all of our shoreline jurisdiction that we would be looking at. Now, whether it ended up. Being all of the the shoreline areas or all of the all of the zones. I, you know, we, I couldn't say until we until we got into the amendment. And again, working with ecology and looking at other municipalities. And what they have adopted. I I haven't, I haven't, we haven't gotten that much detail yet. To know, but it's not, this is not amendment, the amendment is not project specific, I gave the example of the honoring project. Because that was the catalyst for recognizing that. We feel there was likely an oversight in our shoreline master program, and we substantiated that through speaking with ecology.
If I could expound on that, sorry, Councilmember Woo. The the amendment would be specifically looking at public art on the shoreline properties. As I recall, so the for city properties or properties that the city has interest in for public art. So this would not be something that we're looking at changing that would be allowed for. Private properties at this time. The other jurisdictions that Carl's talking about that have worked through ecology, they find that the benefits of public art historically and culturally. Do meet the intent of the shoreline master program in most cases if they're able to be accessed by the public. And so it would be, that would be a portion of this amendment.
So this is for public property only. Public arc on public property and and a lot of those jurisdictions, you said, have already amended their. Shoreline master plan to accommodate this, so we might be able to get some of of their wording. For for our amendment as well. So thank you.
Great.
Councilmember Frannich.
Thank you, yes, it's. This is just another example of. The state overreach by the Department of Ecology, that this. Is what has held up the honoring project from moving forward. It could have been got done last year, but the Department of Ecology. With their. Overreach on regulations is just another thing that takes up a lot of staff time, and. I believe we need more pushback against these. What I believe to be overregulation by the state. That was just for the record.
Go ahead. That's what I thought. Go ahead, Carl.
Okay, well, that that actually concludes my presentation, Mayor. Those are the five amendments that we've brought before you this evening. For your consideration and action. And with that, I would, I would recommend we move to the public hearing.
Mayor, if I may, the. Mayor, if I may, the the procedure will be to for you to open the public hearing. And then, if you wish, you could take public testimony on one application and then go to the next and then go to the next, but it's all within one hearing itself.
Okay. But do we want to stick into the categories of? Well, that's not going to happen with people raising their hand. Okay. I will now open up the public hearing on all comprehensive plan amendments. Anyone who wishes to provide comment on any of the proposed comprehensive plan amendments should do so in this public hearing. I will announce each amendment individually at the time. The city minister, I read the public comments submitted electronically first, followed by live comments. To speak during the public hearing, as I've said before, press the raise hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine on your phone. Your name or your last four digits of your phone number will be called out when it's your turn to speak. When using your phone, you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. And again, all speakers have up to three minutes. So with that, Bob Larson, have we had? Did you have any written comments?
Yes, I do, Mayor and Council. There are, I believe I have three, and they're related to the Arts Commission and inclusion in the cultural element. I'll read these as I receive them. The first one is from the Arts and Humanities of Bainbridge Island. It's regarding the Gig Harbor Arts Commission and inclusion in the cultural element. And it's written by and signed by Anne Smart, who's their executive director. As Executive Director for Arts and Humanities Bainbridge, AHB, I have worked with the city of Bainbridge Island, City Council and staff in a variety of ways to support the creative sector within our city. A critical aspect of the cultural element, one of the eleven eleven elements of the comprehensive plan is the acknowledgement of the significant impact that the arts, culture and humanities play in our local economy, sense of place and our identity. It was through this support that representatives from our cultural sector, mainly the executive directors of our major cultural organizations, were able to successfully recently reinstate cultural funding for our sector. This funding through grants to cultural organizations has been significant, particularly during this difficult time of the global pandemic. Additionally, AHB administers the city's public art committee. Through this collaborative partnership, we were able to establish a public art sub fund that is dedicated to the promotion of public art, including its management, acquisition and inquiries into new and exciting forms of art for our city. Our cultural element also recognize our unique history and heritage, which is something AHB supports, not just through public art, but through our efforts to showcase our indigenous people and celebrate their history, often in partnership with our historical museums. AHB strongly supports the inclusion of a cultural element as part of our comprehensive plan and believe it represents a significant statement of support from our city. Thank you, Anne Smart, Executive Director. The second smittle was was from Anne Knapp. And she it's regarding the vote on moving arts and cultural element forward. And she writes, if there ever was an important time to move the arts cultural element forward so that it will be on a fast track to be incorporated into the Gig Harbor City Conference and Plan, this is it. We have weathered one year of the COVID epidemic and things are turning around, but our most useful tool for resilience and recovery is not in place. The arts plus culture element in our comprehensive plan. When we finally emerge to enjoy the resurgence of the economy, we must be ready to take advantage of any available programs, grants and opportunities. If an arts plus culture element is not mentioned in the comprehensive plan, we will be unable to capture these additional funds for our city. As we move into recovery, arts plus culture can be our economic driver. She's listed out three bullet points. The first one, we need to grab every dollar possible to use in our community. Having a priority for arts plus culture can get money slash grants slash endowments from any programs. This will come from national, state and county programs, and if we set it up properly, we would could also acquire ongoing endowments from within our community. Second bullet, Gig Harbor has already been cited by the twenty sixteen CH Johnson Economic Feasibility Study as as an ideal location to generate additional money into our economy through the arts via direct and indirect spending, induced spending, increased earnings and increased employment. It's a very clean and forward thinking industry to have generating income for our community as we try to reduce our carbon footprint. Third bullet, our community clearly supports the idea of promoting the arts plus culture. A survey done of local citizens showed ninety percent of our community is involved in some sort of creative endeavor and craves more artistic and cultural enrichment. We must not delay putting the arts plus culture element into our comprehensive plan. It needs to be put into the docket and moved forward rapidly if we hope to capture any available appropriate funds provided as stimulus. Thank you, Anne Moore Knapp. And she lists out President Gig Harbor Arts Center Alliance, Board Member and Newsletter Editor for Peninsula Art League, Small Business Owner, Member of Ad hoc Committee who worked right the arts plus culture grant element. Excuse me, arts plus culture element, donator and supporter of many local groups and charities, volunteer teacher in the community. She's an art specialist in K through twelve. She's also says she's a voter. The third smittle is from Charlie Glock Jackson, and she lists as the Chair of the Gig Harbor Arts Commission. Mayor Keon, City Council and Carl DeCemus. This is to urge you to add the proposed arts plus culture element to this year's twenty twenty one comprehensive plan docket. Bit of background. Twenty eighteen, I formed an ad hoc committee of citizens, art and culture organizations and business owners for the purpose of crafting an arts plus culture element for inclusion in the city's comprehensive plan. Our first step was to create and distribute a survey to gauge our community's interest in and support of arts and culture. We had nine hundred fifteen responses to our survey, a record for city sponsored surveys. The results spoke loudly and clearly. Ninety six percent believe that arts and culture activities offer positive experiences for the Gig Harbor community. Eighty three percent strongly agree that arts and culture activities are an asset to the community. Seventy three percent strongly agree that the arts improve the image and identity of the community. Seventy nine percent of household members involved in artistic activities. Seventy eight percent believe that the arts lift lifts my spirits. Based on the survey results and careful research of arts and culture elements and other cities comprehensive plans, our ad hoc group crafted what we believe is the best direction for Gig Harbor. We submitted our proposed element to the Planning Department in June twenty eighteen. Should be noted that we received thoughtful and generous guidance from former senior planner Lindsay Samuel as we worked through our application. Ms. Samuel took time to answer questions and clarify anything we didn't understand, and she made sure that every detail was properly covered. Her her pulling was indispensable to our getting it right. Robin Abney, now Vice Chair of our Arts Commission and also member of the State Arts Commission, was very helpful in putting our vision and goals into words. Our proposed amendment has been in the city's hands nearly three years. I would hope that's long enough for the current planning department to look over it and act on it. That they now propose delaying consideration of our amendment for three more years is simply not acceptable. This is not rocket science. It does not require changing, does not require zoning changes or variances to city code. Our proposed amendment is a simple succinct declaration with specific, with several specific achievable goals that arts and culture are important to our community economically and to our quality of life. It affirms that Gig Harbor is a city that values and supports a full spectrum of arts, artists and arts and culture, cultural organizations and their ability to entertain, inspire, challenge and add dimension and enjoy and enjoyment to the lives of our citizens. It's time for this proposed element to be moved forward and added to the comprehensive plan. I urge you to move it on to the twenty twenty one comprehensive plan docket and to instruct planning to get it done. Thank you for all you do for our community, Charlie Glock Jackson, Chair Gig Harbor Arts Commission. Mayor, this concludes written comments that we received in this particular matter.
Okay, so we're going to have the public comment on. We're going to be voting on these individually. So we've got five different things we're voting on each one. So we're gonna we're gonna take these all in as they come. And so the first one is the one that has the most attention, which is the culture and arts element. So this is going to be for the public that is listening that wants to comment. We're first doing the PL Comp eighteen oh one, which is the culture and art element. The land use, the shoreline, we'll be doing that after, so council can vote on each one first. So we did have. I I see Pat Lance, but there was Josie Turner had her hand up forever, and then she politely took it down. So I'm gonna this is again, this is the art, cultural arts and element first. So Josie Turner, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I am speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, William Turner. We live at ninety five sixteen Randall Drive. And while we are relatively new members of the Gig Harbor community, my husband's family settled here in the early nineteen fifties. And the family property was sold in the mid two thousands and and Bill and I have tried to come back ever since, and now we're here. And we are speaking in support of the arts and cultural element to the comp planned amendment because it affirms Gig Harbor's commitment to the arts and culture in Gig Harbor. My husband is a noted artist, and he spent many times on Sunny Bay doing his artwork in his formative years. And we believe that this really spurned his his career. I have had a long life in arts and culture. I have also been a panelist for the National Endowment for the Arts. And I am well aware of what the inclusion of this amendment in the comp plan can mean for a community to spurn economic development as well as spurn educational opportunities for young people. We want to build a community, I believe, wherever we are, for our young people to have an honor and 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 celebrate their heritage as well as their creative endeavors. And to recognize this in the comp plan is really, really important. In effect, we can make a big deal about the comp plan amendment and and have it cost a lot of money, but it really doesn't have to cost that much. Basically, what it means is that the community affirms its commitment to the arts and culture of its soul. And Gig Harbor has already done that. I mean, you can look at the art walk Gig Harbor has. You can look at at the literary festival, you can look at the museum, you can look at your commitment even tonight of what you're trying to do with renaming the estuary in honor of the Salish people. Gig Harbor's heart and soul is in the arts and culture. And so we think it's a forward thinking amendment. We think it it speaks to the importance of the arts and this community. And we hope that with all our hearts and soul that you will pass this because it is critical, I think, to opening doors for the future of this community. Thank you. Thank you so much for for letting me speak. And we appreciate your time.
Sorry. Yeah, let's try to keep it to three minutes. Pat Lance, you're up. Sorry. Pat, are you there?
Yes.
Hi.
Thank you for having me here to your meeting this evening. You didn't realize that I would come at the very beginning of what has turned out to be the most spirit uplifting public engagement exercise I've had in a long, long time. It's just amazing. I don't know if your agendas happened to come together with this wonderful confluence of important quality of life issues, but this was a ringer. This was truly a zinger of a meeting, and I have enjoyed every minute of it. With that spirit lifting ideas when we began with the renaming of the estuary. And now this capstone of a commitment to culture and arts in our comprehensive plan. I think the evening will have been extremely well spent. The time really has come to do this. I don't know how it could be anything more appropriate to say that we're coming out of our long tunnel of dark days we've spent the last year. And we're coming out it now with an idea of how we are all going to share in a more vibrant, healthy and prosperous future that's going to incorporate the past in a way that recognizes and respects the richness of our cultural heritage and lays the foundation for the continued creativity of all people who live here and all people who engage in whatever it is that gives us that special quality in Gig in the Gig Harbor community of appreciating. And I'm going to give you the list of what happened today of arts plus culture of natural heritage that recognizes the richness and the inclusiveness of our past, historic preservation, unique natural resource preservation, conservation futures, a prosperous economic future. All that was discussed tonight, and all that falls within the rubric of arts plus culture. Lucky us for having put it all together. Lucky me for having witnessed it. Please move this forward, and thank you to Councilmember Jenny Wu for finding a creative way for funding this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to hear your voice again. Thank you for joining us. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to comment on this first item? Which is number one of the eighteen hundred, the culture and art element. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on that. We'll have the second public hearing now, and what we'll do is we'll go through all these and then council can vote on each one. Did you have a question on? Is that okay, Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this would be if anyone wishes to comment on land use element update, which is Comp twenty one one. Anyone, Bob, that sent a letter on this?
Mayor, I do not have any written comments on this item.
Okay, anyone from the public commenting on the land use element update, the second one? Okay, with that, I'll close the public comment on that. The third one for public comment is Comp twenty one oh 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 two, which is shoreline master plan. Shoreline Master Program periodic update. Open up the public comment on that. Anyone, Bob Larson, send a letter in.
Mayor, I have not received any written comments in this item.
Anyone that's listening now from the public that wishes to comment on that item? Okay, I'll close the public comment on that. Open up the public comment on Comp twenty one zero 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 three shoreline master program, public arts exemption exhibition. Yep. Anyone want to comment on that? Any? Did anyone have any written comments on that, Bob?
Mayor, we did not receive any written comments in this item.
Okay, anyone from the public wish to comment on this? All right, I will close the public comment on that one. We're almost done. This is the way I've been instructed. It's the best way to get through this. So it's not my own system. It's the best system I've heard, and and that's who helped me, Katrina Knudsen. So give her kudos. All right, last one, number five. Open up the public comment on Comp twenty one zero 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 four housing element update. Anyone, Bob, sending any public comments on this?
Mayor, we did not receive any written comments in this item.
Okay, anyone from the public wish to comment on this? All right, I'll close the public comment on that, and then we'll go back to council deliberation. And they can have questions for staff, or they can deliberate on their own. We will vote on these separately, though, so let's let's start with the first one, which is the art. Maybe we can save the questions on the other one, so we're gonna go right. We're gonna go through them. So if there's discussion or emotion or discussion, we've got the culture and art element that we're going to be talking now and then having a motion or voting on eighteen zero 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 one. Councilmember Wu.
Yes, thank you.
So in my conversation with Director Knudsen today, one of the other things I learned is that if our staff was at full capacity, if we were fully staffed out, we would not be needing to use consultant for this. We can no, no doubt do it ourselves, we would have enough staff here. But we don't have enough staff here and that's the need for the consultant. We have heard from our community tonight, we've heard them speak of lots of reasons why it's an economic thing to have to move forward with this culture and arts element, to get it on the docket and to move it forward. It gets on the docket and it comes back to the council for a full vote to insert in the comprehensive plan. So, so, so I did talk with our finance director, Dave Rodenback, and yes, we have the ten to fifteen thousand dollars for the consultant to do this and that would take care of the time and the consultant to move this forward. And perhaps it won't take quite so much time for the amendment on the public art in the Shoreline Master Plan, since that's already been done through other areas. I'd like to thank the Arts Commission for working so hard on the element here and hopefully since Lindsay was involved in this, it won't take long to go through that and, and let's hope that this funding with the, with consultant would be a good thing and perhaps not be, perhaps not even be ten to fifteen thousand. So I will make a motion and the motion is to include PL dash COM dash eighteen dash oh 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 one, culture and arts element into move it forward into the docket.
I second that.
Okay, discussion, council member Frannage.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We don't know what our financial future is going to look like. I don't think that it now is the appropriate time to be spending any peripheral money on non-mission sensitive projects. This is something that there is absolutely no reason that this needs to get taken up at this time. I think that it, me personally, I, I don't, I, I believe that I like art. I think it's a great thing, I think it should be something that is driven by the private sector and by community members. I, I don't think the city, I'm for smaller government. I don't think government should be involved in this type of process at all, especially in light of it costing more money to get it done. So I will not be supporting this.
Okay. I do, you know, I, I am supportive of the, all the work that the citizens have done to bring it to this level and they have spent a lot of time getting it to where it is and then they need the support of the city to, to move it forward too. So, council member Markley.
Yes, thank you, I just had a, a quick question for Katrina. You know, I, I want to be sensitive to our citizens, but I also want to be sensitive to what our staff is asking of us as far as their current workload. If, if this were to be pushed to twenty twenty-two, would this, do you think this would then be able to be handled internally by our staff and not with a, having to have a consultant's help? Therefore not costing ten to fifteen thousand dollars extra, but would, would there, are you saying you'll have time to do this as, you'll have staff time to do this if you push it to next year to begin the work? Is, I'm just asking this as a clarifying question.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, council member Markley, the, the answer is yes. So more time, if we, now that we know, if we know that the council wants us to do something, we can absolutely put it on our twenty twenty-two work, work program now and ensure that we have staff capacity to do that. The, the creative problem solving for this, that council member Woo talked about our conversation this morning was in order to figure out how to get it done this year, noting all of the other work priorities. And I, I, I appreciate that you're sensitive to, to our staff and their current workload, which is very heavy. And so that is where the monetary value comes in, where, you know, if we don't have the extra time, then we need extra resources in order to get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Heinz.
Yeah, just a clarification, my, my understanding on the comprehensive planning processes, and this is a Gig Harbor rule, that private amendments can only be processed in odd number of years. So could we actually go to two thousand twenty-two or does it autumn? If we don't do it this year, it would push us to two thousand twenty-three automatically based on the rules that are, that are on the books right now.
A good question, council member Heinz, I need to look at the code and see what we deem public or versus our private application. My, my gut reaction was that since it was from the Arts Commission, members that it would be deemed a public application and we could take it at any time.
Find out that answer.
Just the other thing. Yeah, there is a financial impact here, but you use the, the concept of relativity, I guess I'd call it. We just spent three hundred thousand dollars on a public work overrun on the Patterson's Dock and didn't bat an eye. Another ten to fifteen thousand dollars, not going to break the bank, okay? We, we already broke that part of it. I would also add that a lot of the actions that are currently, particularly on the other amendments that are in here, those are carryover from two thousand twenty and I assume the budget came with them, the money, not, not the budget, the money came with those. If we didn't do the action, then we didn't spend the money. So I, I would assume there's an opportunity there to, to find the ten or fifteen thousand dollars. And I would also maybe put a little constraint on it called the, the write-up that they had for two thousand eighteen is pretty doggone thorough and I would assume that they could start with that as the starting point and, and get a shot right out of the, right off the blocks, okay? To come forward with an amendment. I'd also add that we as a group get a second shot at this thing in June. When this thing, if this thing is approved, like to process, we can say in June, yeah, it's go or it's no go. It isn't like the end of the world here, we're not making a final decision here tonight. We're just making a decision called, should we consider it for inclusion? And we'll, we'll talk about it in June on the final thing going forward. In fact, the final, the final going forward won't happen till the end of the year. So we actually get two bites at it. So I think it's just something to, to, to keep in mind here.
Right.
Council member Heinz, I've looked at the code under nineteen oh nine oh four oh definitions and I would deem this application a non-private application, so would not fall under the, the year rule that you described.
Okay, good, thanks for the clarification.
Council member Jensen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And council member Heinz makes a really good point that this is not the end all be all tonight, our vote tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Knudsen is to put this on the docket, it would go to the Planning Commission, it would have a public hearing. So there's, there's opportunities to continue to look at this. I do think that ten to fifteen thousand is a good investment for this, for all the reasons that the citizens have come forward with. And I wanted to ask Ms. Knudsen, a couple of the letters mentioned that if we have the arts element, it would make us, boy, it's getting late, I can hardly talk. It, it would make us eligible for some grants and funding opportunities that we wouldn't be eligible for otherwise and I'm a huge fan of leveraging other funds, so is this true? And if that is the case, that could really help balance out the investment, the small investment that the citizens are asking us to make tonight.
I wish that I could answer your question a hundred percent, council member Jensen. It's, it is true that when you have an element that has a, a formal city policy, then those state, then those policies can be utilized in grant applications as support. Typically for things like a transportation grant or a parks grant, it would need to be on some sort of capital improvement program showing that the, the city is, has necess, or put money, capital money or monies aside in a CIP or CFP. But I think either way, even if it was just a policy in the comp plan, that could definitely be utilized in support of a grant application.
Thank you. Council member Frannage.
Yeah, well, first of all, is, just to clarify, council member Heinz, we weren't all in favor of spending the three hundred thousand without batting an eye. But that, that kind of council member Jensen's questions, you kind of answered it, Katrina. The Arts Commission can move forward with whatever they want to do, whether or not it's in the comp plan or not. Is that what I heard you say, more or less?
What I was referring to was council member Jensen's question regarding grant funding and if we would be, or the Arts Commission would be more likely to receive grants if we had a comprehensive plan chapter. My answer to that is likely yes, because it would be a, a formal city action that shows certain policies or objectives. So it would show the city's commitment to that. So I would see that as being a strong point for a grant application.
So it is stronger if it's in the comp plan?
That's correct.
Okay, well, you know, to me, this is, once it gets, something gets ensconced in the concept comprehensive plan, it's something that, that takes on a mind of its own and I can see this. We get a grant, very seldom do we get a grant, that we all think that we get a grant and it's free money and it's never free money, but with those comes strings attached, just like what's happening on Stinson. We, we got a federal grant and we think we're saving money, but the strings that come along with those grants ends up costing us money and that we wouldn't have had to spend otherwise. So anyway, I'll leave it at that for now, I, I have a feeling how this is going to go down, so.
I think it, personally, I think it's a small amount of money, the ten to fifteen thousand. I think there's a lot of, a lot of people that have spent a lot of time from the public on this, not just the Art Commission, but a lot of public people with their surveys. So I also feel that if we, if we try to work on finding the time next year, there's always too much on our plate, it's going to be hard every year. So I hope council supports council member Woo's plan. So council member Woo, was that to, to, we would cap your motion at like fifty, can't say ten to fifteen, so fifteen thousand dollars to have a consultant work it into their schedule this year?
This year, yes, and then, and fine, we can cap it at fifteen thousand, I don't think it will take that much, but yeah, totally.
Katrina?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that council member Woo would need to revise her original motion. The original motion did not, to my recollection, include a monetary amount.
Right.
Or a budget.
You want me to do that now?
Yeah, let me just have councilor Robert Salt first and then you can do that. Spencer.
So I guess my question is, or my concern is, and I don't want to say that I'm not concerned about coming up with the money because of course that is a, a concern of mine, but I think community director, or director Knudsen said that they just don't have more staff time. So even if we had come up with the money, can we still squeeze water from a stone with staff time? And that's, that's my biggest concern, I mean, I think the arts are important and everything, but I don't, I don't feel that the, the bottom falls out of the art world if we, you know, put this on hold for a year because we don't have staff to do it. So that's my question, is can we get, you know, can this move forward even if with the money? I mean, is this going to put a lot more pressure on our staff? And I, I personally don't agree that we're out of the pandemic. I think we're probably, if anything, with these variants, could be potentially starting back over. But we won't know that until maybe the end of March or April. But I, I wouldn't be closing the book on the pandemic right now and I don't feel optimistic about it, quite honestly. So those are, those are my thoughts.
Council member Robert Salt, to answer your question, the, the work program that we set forth again at the retreat was a full work program that assumed if Charles' plate is full with the items that, that were presented. This is going to be some additional work, as was pointed out, because he will have to manage a consultant. As council member Woo also described, currently we are operating without a, our principal planner position being filled. So some of us are wearing multiple hats. That being said, the position for principal planner is posted and, you know, without going through the, all of the, the what-if scenarios that were in my brain this morning, you know, if we're able to come up to full staff, there would be some additional capacity to take on some work. And so, you know, I want to be optimistic and say that yes, we could get it done during that. But right now with the staff that I have right now, without the funding, there's not any way I could squeeze any more water out of the rockets, someone said. It's just, you know, we have to look at, from a leadership and management perspective, we have to, you know, I need to look at my staff as well and know that they're, they have an achievable workload that isn't going to stress them out and cause them harm. So that's one of the items that I spoke with council member Woo today is, you know, and another thing is not wanting to over promise and under deliver. My department always wants to promise what we, what we can deliver to you and deliver a quality product. So those are some of the considerations.
Okay, council member Woo, do you want to say your motion?
I do, thank you, and tha, and that's the reason for the money is for the consultant because our staff is quite, is quite busy. So my, I will move then, I move to place on the docket PL comp, C O M P dash one eighteen dash zero zero one, the cultural and arts element and to allocate fif, not, no more than fifteen thousand dollars for the consultant to work on this project.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. And, you know, I might add, as she said, you know, if, when we have a, we have that job posted and once we fill that job, she does see some additional time allowed and then with the consultant, that would probably allow that to happen. Council member Rodenberg, you also had your hand up, was, yeah, you, go ahead.
Yeah, I did, you know, all this conversation and it is about hiring a consultant and it just plays the fact that we're understaffed and it's a little bit off topic, but I think that we ought to put extra emphasis on filling those posted positions that we have that forces us to going to outside consultants. If it wasn't for the fact that we hadn't filled those positions yet, we wouldn't even be having this, this conversation. So I'd like to just, as a point, make it that we need to fill those posted positions we have. There's multiple positions that the city has posted that we're not getting filled. Extra emphasis should be put on filling those positions. That's a little bit off topic, but in general, it's right on topic.
Council member Frannage.
Yes, I'm just wondering, council member Woo didn't specify this, where that funds is, what, where it's coming from, general fund, is it?
So our finance director, Dave Rodenback, told me that was no problem, so that, that funding will be coming. We have the ten to fifteen thousand dollars to, to pay for the consultant.
But out of what fund?
So, so that's something that the finance director would be able to answer better than I.
Okay, so any other deliberation? Okay, I see a motion, I see if there was a second. All those in favor say aye, or let's do a, let, yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No. No.
No.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Markley, say that again?
Reluctantly, no.
Okay, abstain. Okay, motion passes four to three. We will go to the second item, and I would imagine it'll come out of the general fund, but we will touch base, Bob will touch base with our finance director, Councilmember Woo. So we're going to work that into the plan, Katrina. Our second item is the land use element update, PL Comp 21 dash 0001. Any, any, let's put a motion on the table first, before we discuss it.
Move to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21 dash 001.
Second, it was Councilmember Markley, I believe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain, motion passes seven to zero. Okay, PL Comp 21 0002, Shoreline Master Program periodic update. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Move to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21 dash 0002.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
I, I said aye, sorry.
Okay. Opposed, abstain. Okay, the Shoreline Master Program passed six to one. PL Comp 21 0003, Shoreline Master Program, Public Arts Exception. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Move to approve Composi, Comp Plan Amendment 21 dash 0003.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Is there any question? Should we have discussion after the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. We'll go back to discussion on Shoreline Master Program.
Yeah, I have a, I have an issue. This is the one about the arts on the shoreline, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I have an issue with that. I think that art is very subjective, but however, nature is not. So the idea that we could put art on the shoreline in obstruct nature, it goes against my grain. I think that, I know this is probably fairly focused on the honoring project. But I, I don't think it should be all encompassing of putting art everywhere on the shoreline, and who's to say what art it's going to be? So I, I object to this, and I won't be voting in favor of it.
Okay. Any other comment? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. For the Shoreline Master Program, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
May.
Abstain. Motion passes six to one. Comp Plan 21 0004, Housing Element Update. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Move to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21 dash 0004.
Second.
Let's see, let me raise my hand here.
Discussion on that, Councilmember Heinz?
Yeah, I'm confused on this one. I'm looking at the project description, says the city's adopted 2021 budget has identified two items that, when complete, will likely require amendments to the housing element of the city's comprehensive plan. I'm totally in agreement with the housing attainability analysis. I'm totally in agreement with the urban growth area analysis. What I'm struggling with is what sets up the compact, the com, the amendment to the comprehensive plan as a requirement in this year? I think we're heading for the, the, either the GMA or the PSRC approval of either Vision 2050 or whatever the, the GMA comes up with. But that won't happen until 2004, I mean, 2024, I'm sorry. So if we're, if we're in a crunch here, I don't understand why we're going crazy on this thing and racking our hands on some of the other ones. Maybe you can explain that.
What? Katrina?
Earl, did you want to answer that one?
Earl?
Yeah, it's a, thank you, Councilmember Heinz, it's a, it's a good question. And both the land use element update, as well as the housing element update that we're proposing, are, you know, are relative to those, those two budgeted items that we, that I noted when I presented on these. And, you know, we're anticipating that there will be some amendments necessary to those comprehensive plan elements in order to maintain consistency between what could potentially be changed as a result of those studies within the Gig Harbor Municipal Code, and/or what comes out of those analyses relative to the comprehensive plan. And so we want to have the ability to go ahead and make the amendments to the comprehensive plan concurrent with those analyses and any changes to the, to the Gig Harbor Municipal Code in order to save time down the road.
Okay, but you, but you have funding for the housing attainability analysis and also for the urban growth and area analysis, which are the underlying elements of that thing, okay?
That's correct.
And I guess my question comes down to, if you did it this year versus next year, is there a big problem one way or the other?
Currently, we don't see a, a problem either way, Councilmember Heinz. The purpose for this application was to initiate it in case we get to the point through the public process where a comprehensive plan amendment would be desired by the planning commissioner of the council. We wanted to be able to afford you that opportunity to do that without having to wait the additional time. If council does not initiate this application right now, it would just need, any amendment that would come from that work would need to wait, would be required to wait. Because we can only amend the comprehensive plan once per year.
Okay, and you can tell where I'm heading for here. Well, if we're personnel limited and potentially dollar limited, why would we pull that into this year and, for example, kick the arts thing out two years or a year or two years, given the public response to that art thing? I'm struggling here, Cole, I don't, I don't understand.
So the urban growth area analysis and housing assessment, those things are items that will be taken into consideration and put into the comprehensive plan in some way, shape, or form. We don't know the outcome of those studies yet. Are budgeted for them, and they are priority number two and three for our work program going forward, starting with the UGA annexation analysis.
So the key here is doing the fundamental underlying analysis, not necessarily getting it into the comprehensive plan this year.
That's correct. However, as I mentioned, you know, we put this application forward in case there was something policy-wise that the council wanted to take action on based on the analysis and what we find out. If we don't have this initiated, then you would be unable to amend the comprehensive plan until, it would be doctored in 2022.
Okay.
From a, from a staff perspective, if we don't initiate it tonight, it's not the end of the world. Just know that if there were policy amendments that are desired through those processes, then they would just need to wait a year.
Will we know enough in the timeframe, particularly, I'm looking at June, and then I'm looking at probably November, to get a comp plan amendment through, will we know enough from those two studies to actually write a comp plan amendment?
So that's unknown at this point, Councilmember Heinz. Again, it would be the option if, if, you know, things worked out and there were policy items that the council wanted to do, then we would be able to add those in. If you don't, if council does not initiate that from a staff perspective, that is, that is fine. It would just, any of those amendments would need to be doctored next year for work next year. Again, with the initiation of this, it doesn't guarantee that there would be any comprehensive plan amendments associated with these studies. It's just that if there were amendments desired, the council would be able to do them.
Okay, I, I guess to Councilmember Rodenberg's point, hopefully, over the next year, half year, whatever, we will be in a better manpower can, or people power position, number one. Two, the, the idea that unless the underlying analysis, those two analyses are complete.
You froze. Are you? No, Councilmember Heinz, your three minutes was up, sorry. Okay, we'll come back to you, Councilmember Aberstolm.
Yeah, so I'm just, I don't really have a question, I've got more of a comment. I know that we voted on Councilmember Woo's amendment to the first
Right.
Did we actually vote on the actual culture and art element portion of it, or we just voted on the, the amendment? I can't remember.
I know, yeah. I, I thought about that about a minute and a half ago.
No, I, I made an amendment. I mean, I made it, I redid it, I restated it with the dollar amount in there, and then we voted.
Yes, okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frannich?
Thank you. Yes, I, you know, that's why I was a little confused, why, you know, two, well, 001 and 004 have a lot of duplicative language in there. I believe what Katrina was saying is that, that the work, it's not causing any more work to do. 004 is not adding any more work, because the work is getting done combined with 001 and 004. But this just gives you the ability of, after those analyses get done, that we can, if we need to take action, we can. Is that right?
That's correct. This in no way, shape, or form requires an amendment to be done. It's just that if there's an outcome of those things.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Much better to do it all at one time than try to do it later and have, when you're already doing parts of it, yeah. Councilmember Heinz, did you, did that complete what you wanted to say, or did you?
Yeah, yeah, last time I said something, though, we got kicked off line here, so I'll.
You got.
At that.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion on this, council? Okay, we have, I believe we have a motion, a second, so all those in favor on adopting number five, which is 0004, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain. Okay, number five passes seven to zero. Okay, we're moving on to new business item four, first reading ordinance, WANRAK, Wayne Rack, franchise agreement. Report, Public Works Director Jeff Langhorne.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you've seen in the council bill, the city has received an application from WANRAK LLC, who is requesting a telecommunications franchise agreement from the city to place a fiber optic network system in our right-of-way. And I've had some questions at the Public Works Committee, and I just want to be very clear that this franchise application is not requesting installation of any 5G infrastructure. Any attempt for anyone to install 5G infrastructure has to have its own franchise agreement that is very specific to that type of infrastructure. But what?
Hour and a half on that?
What's that?
We won't be here for another hour and a half on that.
Right, let's be very clear. So, but what WANRAK is proposing is to provide a fiber optic network connection in the city's right-of-way between schools within the Peninsula School District. And as it's noted in the council bill, the city is required to treat similar companies with what's called competitive equity when it comes to granting access to the city's right-of-way. And then, as also noted in the council bill, please recall that the city council did approve a very similar franchise agreement with MCI Metro in September of 2019 to install the same type of fiber optic cable network. The only difference between the previously approved MCI Metro franchise agreement and the one that's before you tonight includes minor revisions to notification requirements when there's a transfer of interest. And then also, there are revisions to the indemnification section based on input the city has received from both RMSA and the city attorney. So this draft ordinance was presented at the February 9th Public Works Committee meeting and received support to proceed it back to, or proceeded to the full council as written. Again, this is just first reading, this is not requesting adoption, just looking for any input, comments, questions here, and then we, if there are none, or based on some changes, we can bring those back to the next council meeting for adoption. But the version that you do have before you tonight, staff does recommend adoption of this ordinance at the second reading. Any questions?
Councilmember Markley?
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying the 5G question, because you know that was going to be the first thing I was going to ask, so thank you. So this is, this is fiber optic cable to go between two schools?
Multiple schools, actually. There, there is a map that they provided, I can bring that up on screen if you'd like, but they would be connecting all of the schools that are on the periphery of the city and within the city. So it goes from Peninsula School District down Burnham, it also goes up to the New Elentor School, number nine, and out to schools out on Rosedale Street, and then down 38th, down to Goodman and Harbor Ridge. Oh, sorry, Goodman and Harbor Hill, right.
Their purpose in doing this, is this to increase broadband strength for the school's Wi-Fi systems and community, being able to access the internet and not get kicked off all the time and?
Well, and, and to strengthen the connectivity just directly between the schools, so that they don't have to piggyback on somebody else's fiber optic system and receive priority or limitations that that fiber optic company is, is presenting and restricting.
Okay, because I, I think I remember hearing about this being an issue for our schools and that this would greatly help them. So, okay, great, thank you for the, for the clarification on those.
You bet.
Great, any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, we're going to open up the public comment. Bob, did anyone submit a public comment on this?
They have not submitted any written comments, Mayor.
Okay, we're, we're losing our crowd, but there's still four. So anyone from the public wish to comment? Okay, I will close the public comment. And we have, let's see, I don't think we have a motion yet. So do I have a motion?
This is first reading, so we need a motion at this time, Mayor.
Oh, great, so we'll bring this back for a second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Council reports, council comments. I do want to say, I, I thought you all, looking at my email, I thought you all got this, but it looks like Laura Zoom wasn't working from tourism this afternoon, so she just sent out at 8:21, 29, an invite to all of you for Veterans Memorial ribbon cutting tomorrow. So I wanted to give you a heads up, you'll see it, but again, I wanted to let you know now, so that for the late hour, there's a computer prompt, just sent out a Zoom calendar to invite the ribbon cutting at Veterans Memorial tomorrow afternoon.
Mayor?
We'd love to have your park, we'd love to have you out at the park to celebrate. We have safety requirements, including bringing, it would, it's going to be capped at 15 people. Staff, mayor, developer, the cameraman, and four in-person spots, the discovery is. staff, mayor, developer, the cameraman, and four in-person spots for discovery students. Councilmembers all could still make it and you'd still be, still have no more than 15. We'll have six feet distance, we'll do a ribbon cutting, and we'll have spaced a distance. So you'd like to let Laura know or is there a show? Yeah, I just. You're welcome. So that would be tomorrow.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Because I didn't know the date about this, I just read that email myself. We haven't had an opportunity to.
Notice it.
advertise that or notice it. So therefore, you can't have more than three of the council members show up or you have a quorum and it's a public meeting.
What if we, how about if we, if we didn't have more than three council members at one spot? They stay completely separate.
I can just tell you right now, I, I won't be there, so that. I won't.
I can't come either, unfortunately.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm pulling my boat out. I won't.
All right, we're okay. We're okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. So the other three, let, let Laura know if you'd like. So I wanted to let you know that as soon as I just saw that. And with that, council reports, comments, we've got a Public Works Committee on February 9th. Councilmember, we had one. Councilmember Frannich.
Yes. We had a Public Works meeting, as the mayor said. We discussed the WANRAC franchise agreement. We discussed some additional scopes of the annual pavement maintenance. And there were three that were discussed. One of them I brought up was the, if you're heading westbound on Olympic, the left turn lane onto Point Fosdick, there's some really bad ruts in that road. And since we're going to be repaving that section of road, I thought in the name of having a crew there and not have to remobilize to fix that, that it could be done. But we had the discussion and according to Jeff, Mr. Langhorne, that there would be staff time involved in that. So that project died off. If any other council members would like to speak to that and we could get a majority to get that work done, I would appreciate it. The other project that we did decide to move forward with was on Harborview Drive, heading east on Harborview, past Ansich Park, where the pavement, the new pavement, when the park installation went in, where it meets the old pavement, there's a dip there. And I'm not sure where the idea came from, but the idea is to fix the dip there and make that transition smoother. That had support from staff since it didn't, it was apparently needed minimal staff time to make that happen. So that one moved forward. And the other one that we talked about was a section of roadway on Woodhill Drive over near Wallsmith Gravel Pit, Woodhill Drive. There's some section of road that apparently Public Works thought the whole section of road needed to be redone, which would have required a lot of staff time. And we decided that, that that wouldn't move forward. Then the other one topic was said regulating commercial development access. And that was one I brought up and it'll, it, I had a question about parking stall widths in developments and ingress, egress widths of the lanes there, which we come to find out that is a planning and building committee issue. So we made quick work of that. And if anybody has any questions or any of the other committee members have any comments, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
I do have a question.
For Rodenberg.
Yeah. Councilman Frannich, would you reiterate the concern you have at Point Fosdick and what you're looking for support there?
Yeah, if you are heading eastbound on Point Fosdick and you want to make a, you get in the two left-hand turn lanes to go down towards Safeway on Olympic, or excuse me, on Point Fosdick, there are really severe ruts in those turn lanes. And since we were mobilizing a crew to do, we're redoing a section of Point Fosdick of resurfacing that's in this year's budget. And so my thought was, since we were having the crews out there to do that resurfacing work, that we could take care of those severe ruts in the turn lanes.
I support that 100%. I think that that actual intersection is probably the busiest in the whole city. So if we can improve that, I'm in favor of that 100%.
Well, I, I appreciate that. We, the, the, the issue came up with, about staff time getting involved. And I still feel it's very important. My other two committee members didn't feel it was, so it died at committee. But, you know, now is the time to have a discussion on it, I guess.
Well, let's have some discussion. I think it's necessary. Those kinds of, those kinds of things are what citizens recognize and what they notice. And if we're not taking care of ruts in the road at the busiest intersection in town, when we already have a crew there, I think we're negligent in our responsibility.
Jeff?
Sure, so, thank you, Mayor. I understand completely why it seems like it's a very easy solution to just have the contractor while they're there modify quickly the plans. And if it wasn't at the middle of an intersection that has traffic loops in it, then it would probably be a much easier project. But that intersection is not controlled by video detection. It has traffic signals down embedded in the pavement. And if we were to come through there and grind into that intersection, we're then going to disturb all of the traffic sensors down in the pavement. And then we would have to replace it. So it's, it's those traffic loops that make this a challenge. Just adding some area to grind and fill back in with asphalt is easy, but all the rest of that work is, is what makes it even more time consuming. And so that's, that's staff's perspective.
Well, I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean that we're never going to do it?
No, it just, no, it just means that, right, but with the limited amount of staff time we have, and since we're like, as we've discussed multiple times, we're already beyond capacity, that we, adding anything to our task list will then push something else out in the other projects that we have coming up.
Then that just points to my comments earlier about making sure that we fill those positions we have available. The city can't operate with less than adequate staff. So I, I think there should be emphasis on filling all those positions in Public Works, in Community Development, and everywhere else. And we, we ought to think about what we have to do to quit losing staff and gain more. Thank you.
Bob, would you maybe mention how it's hard to, with HR is very busy and it's hard to hand, it's, it's not the easiest to hire under COVID crisis when city halls closed or I think.
Mayor, Mayor Collins, I'll just say, we're working diligently to get these positions filled. We've had a few setbacks with a couple of the positions where we were attempting to hire and the top candidate, for one reason or another, perhaps withdrew. And so we had to restart a couple of those searches, but we're working diligently, I can assure you. We even hired a temporary full-time employee in HR to help out with this stuff. So it's not, it's not for sake of the lack of trying or at least attempting.
Okay. We've got boards and commission candidate review was February 16th, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. So one of the first things we did there is to elect a new chairperson. And I'm really happy to say that the chair will be making the report tonight, and that would be Councilmember Spencer Abasal.
Thank you, former chair and Councilmember Wook. We had two orders of business for the board's candidate review committee. The first one, as Councilmember Wook mentioned, I was nomiteered to become the chair and I was welcomed that and I accept that. And I'd like to, of course, thank Councilmember Wook for her leadership in that and setting the role and example to follow. The second order of business that we went through was we just reviewed and reexamined the questions that we asked for all of the different boards and potential questions that would be asking candidates. We kept some, we added some others and we dropped a few. And it was a pretty basic meeting. And I think that pretty much covers it. Councilmember Rob. Can't think of your last name now. Denson, thank you. Do you have anything else you want to throw in there?
No, that was perfect.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, other council comments, reports, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. Sort of on the same flow as trying to hire new people. I think I'm going to request that, it doesn't need to evoke, but I would request to have at the next council meeting on the agenda a little report on our follow-up to the employee survey. I think that we were trying to hire a company to work on some follow-up issues. So I would like to see a report on that at the next, on the agenda at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Frannich.
Thank you. Just wanted to just kind of, and I won't take too long here because I know it's really late, but, you know, part of my hesitance with this whole arts element in the comp plan is, you know, it's just not arts. It's arts and. It's so late now.
Oh, come on. Don't you remember our 11:30 PM meetings we used to have? Come on.
Oh, I do, I do remember them, not very fondly. Arts and culture. And as Councilmember Rodenberg pointed out, art is very subjective. And I can, I can understand why, what his hesitancy was on that. But just in general, art is subjective and culture is very much subjective. And in today's world, that is the word that scares me more than anything about adding that into that comprehensive plan is when you start talking about culture and what form that may take by an unelected body for recommendations. And anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other council comments? Okay, we've got announcements about the meetings. We've got, Councilmember Heinz.
Well, I was going to move to adjourn, but go ahead.
Okay, Planning and Building Committee is Monday, March 1st. City Council Study Session is Thursday, March 4th. And now it's your turn, Councilmember Heinz.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, second. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.